Good evening, everyone. This is our regular meeting of the Southfield City Council being held as a WebEx meeting on April 26, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks. Present. Brightwell?
Here.
Haskins?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Present.
Taylor?
Present.
Cruz?
Present.
Madam President, you do have a quorum. We do have the mayor on the line and our city administration and other department heads.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell, would you please say the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, in light of all of the items that we have on the agenda tonight, we do have a fairly long agenda. I have two things that I'd like to add to our agenda. One is a 10-minute recess after the site plan. And the other is the vacancy that's here on council. I'd like to add that as item H on our second consent on our agenda items. Okay.
Good.
The next we have is a presentation. The first presentation is from Yolanda Charles, our Oakland County Commissioner. Ms. Charles, are you on the line?
I am indeed. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I will be sure to provide the URL to the full council. I do have it here in the chat, but I don't know your rules on chat. It's about four slides roughly in a Google Doc. And so let me back up a moment and just say good evening. Thank you for allowing me a little time on your agenda. I appreciate Council President Taylor mentioning that you guys have a full evening. So of course I will definitely not belabor. As was mentioned, my name is Yolanda Smith Charles. I am the Oakland County Commissioner who represents District 17, which is a portion of Southfield. Thank you to the entire council, all of the elected officials for this opportunity. Now, as I mentioned before, I have a few pieces of information that I think might be pertinent. This is updated as of April 16 of 2021, where in Oakland County specifically, we've had 715 new cases of coronavirus or COVID cases. And we've had one death reported thus far, up to 416, 2021. In Oakland County totally, we've had 87,374 cases in total with 1,622 deaths. A lot of that is to really commend our medical professionals who are helping people survive this tremendous ordeal. And then we've had 7.4 million doses administered in the state of Michigan and 852,000 approximately administered in Oakland County. Kudos to the city of Southfield for all that you guys are doing to make the vaccine accessible. We also want to highlight the Oakland County Health Department. Their job is not just COVID-19, whether we're talking about testing or vaccinations. They're still making sure restaurants are safe. They're still operating at the county health departments. If there's other things going on from TB shots to all of the other types of things, we've consistently depended on the county health department for. So just wanted to remind folks that although it seems like top of mind, first priority, the county's health department does still have all of those other things we expected from them, that they still operate. Now, as I just quickly turn to more so on the business development or economic development side, we were able to receive $2.84 million through the OakGov awarding system to 49 different communities. I'm certain your Chamber of Commerce and Rochelle Freeman and others probably are fully aware of this and probably have shared this with you already. But just in case anyone's watching today, listening in, proprietors of restaurants or other businesses, but restaurants specifically, should reach out to restaurantrelief@oakgov.com. That's pretty easy to remember, restaurantrelief@oakgov.com. The last URL I want to provide for you is getreadyvaccine.com. Again, that's getreadyvaccine.com. That is a service for homebound residents where they can contact that email, that website, so that they can get vaccinated. And there is a phone number, just in case we have folks who won't be able to get online. That phone number is 810-331-0902. Again, 810-331-0902. I am certain that the mayor and his report perhaps will talk about the need for parks help. I'm talking about it at the county level. He'll maybe referring to it at the city level. But if you do have some extra time this summer and you want to check out what's available as far as hiring at Oakland County Parks, please don't hesitate to do that. In closing, last week, we held a news conference where I was able to participate in an initiative to prevent sources of income housing discrimination. And I see on your agenda that you have a resolution coming forward. So I look forward to supporting you all as you make that call in terms of voting. But we basically unveil Oakland County's initiative to ensure fair housing in the county. And so there'll be more information coming your way for sure. And lastly, since I was here back in January, the commission has approved and included $2 million for sustainability efforts for the county's campus. So obviously that doesn't represent the entire county, but it's a start. It lets people know that we're going to start with our home base and then work our way out for sustainability. Other than that, I just want to ask that if you live in Precinct 22, that you consider a supportive vote of the Oak Park Public Schools Millage? We all know my love of public education and I know Oak Park could really use that help. So if you are inclined on May 4th, be sure to cast your vote to support the Oak Park Schools, Public Schools Millage. Thank you for your time, council, mayor, clerk, all of the above, and I appreciate the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Charles. We appreciate you updating us and taking time out of your schedule to meet with us and keep us on task of what's going on. Is there anyone that would like to make a comment or have anything else to speak with Commissioner Charles before we go to the next item?
Just if I could, through the president, I'd just like to thank Ms. Charles for keeping us updated, as you already stated. It's always good that every level of government is working together and communicating with each other. And so we appreciate you being here, Ms. Charles. Thank you, this is Councilman Cruz.
Thank you, and we look forward to seeing you again next quarter. So thank you for making yourself available. All right, our next presentation is the joint resolution for April as Fair Housing Month. Mayor Seiber?
Give me one second, President. I have to, we have a lot of people on, I think he may be muted. Give me one second.
Okay.
So many people on here. Second.
If not, I can go ahead and read it on his behalf.
Yeah, he's here. If you just give me one, those 30 seconds, I'm just gonna unmute everyone.
Okay, sure.
The mayor wants you to speak up if you're... There you go, we found them, okay. Are you there, Mayor? I think that was him. Are you there, Mr. Mayor?
Hello.
There you go.
All right, good evening, council. April is Fair Housing Month, and we have a resolution that we would like to present as well as highlight the actions of one of our local organizations, the Greater Metropolitan Area Association of Realtors, otherwise known as Gmar. I'll quickly read the resolution. This is a joint resolution, mayor and council. Whereas the United States Congress passed the Fair Housing Act of 1958 as part of sweeping changes to ensure the civil rights of all Americans. And whereas the Fair Housing Act of 1968 and later amendments prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental and financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, handicaps and family status. And whereas the housing act was to prevent discrimination and reverse housing segregation that manifested itself and such things. And these things happened in Southfield, such as redlining, mortgage availability, racial steering, blockbusting and deed restrictions based on race, religion, national origin and so forth. And whereas, a number of these discriminatory practices have continued even after the passage of the Fair Housing Act and its later amendments. Whereas the Realtor Equity and Inclusion Conference was recently held in collaboration with Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors headquartered in Southfield, Birmingham, Bloomfield and Lakeside Associations and 275 networks of the Women's Council of Realtors to bring greater awareness and further combat discriminatory practices. And whereas, double mayor and city councils stand behind their commitment to maintain Southfield as a welcoming city and have pledged their determination to recognize and root out tragic, painful, maddening effects of systemic racism. And whereas, realizing that real estate agents and brokers many times are the first to welcome newcomers to our city, we applaud training for those engaged in this profession to view all people as unique and recognize, understand and appreciate individual differences and to build awareness of implicit bias and damaging stereotypes. And whereas, we support Gmar, the Women's Council of Realtors and allied associations in their efforts to be more inclusive and diversified. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby support April as Fair Housing Month and thank the Women's Council of Realtors and the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors for their efforts to embrace diversity, equity and inclusion in their profession. Be it further resolved that the mayor, council, city of Southfield adopt this resolution at its meeting of April 26, 2021. Council, I would ask for a motion if you're so inclined.
Madam President, I move to approve that joint resolution on April as Fair Housing Month.
Support. Councilman Mandelbaum supports.
Okay, it's been motion by Councilman Cruz and it was supported by Councilman Brightwell. I heard him first. Council, for the adoption of the resolution for April as Fair Housing Month. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. On the line accepting this resolution is Terri Spiro. She is Gmar President-elect. I would ask that Madam Chair, you recognize her?
Yes, if she's on the line, would you care to speak?
Yes, hi. Good evening, I'm Terri Spiro, and thank you so much. First of all, as President-elect of Gmar, we are so grateful and honored to be recognized by the great city of Southfield where our office resides. I think a few special thanks are in order. First of all, our association is over 10,000 members, 10,000 Realtors and affiliates strong. And our association is committed completely to fair housing, but also diversity and inclusion in every aspect of our business, our committees, et cetera. This program that was put on for several hours, which was an unbelievable training for our leadership, was the vision of our President of Gmar, Katie Weaver, and our Chair of our Diversity and Inclusion Committee, Jay Sanders. This was their vision and it was sponsored, as you mentioned, by several chapters of the Women's Council of Realtors, which by the way are not all women, as you'll see in a second. Our, the Presidents of the four major sponsors, Melissa Deegan from Corridor 275, that is west of us, Amy Parsons, President of the Birmingham Bloomfield Chapter, Pat Derry, President of Lake Point, and Jacob Herbert, President of the Greater Rochester Area. So we cannot thank you enough for bringing more recognition to fair housing. By this honor, I think it helps enforce our commitment as an association to fair housing, and we are so honored. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else have any comments or anything before we move to the next item? Okay, hearing none. We have no appointments for tonight. We do have two sets of minutes, council.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Bright.
Yes.
I have a question and/or amendment to both sets of minutes.
Okay.
With respect to the April 5 minutes, on page seven, with respect to Chick-fil-A, they gave us a performance measurement based on my question with respect to how long would it take them to fulfill an order? And the gentleman told us that it will take 90 seconds. I would like to see that as part of a minute, a part of the minutes. It is a performance measurement down the road. It's there, we start getting complaints about delays and/or whatever goes on there. But it was in response to my question about how long would it take to get an order filled? They indicated stated 80 seconds. So I would like to see that become a part of the minutes as for future references if we need it, if we need it.
Okay. Madam Clerk, beckon. Will you be able to add that to the minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. And for the, the next one, you had another?
Yes, on the page nine, the American Rescue Plan. I spoke on that particular item. I specifically brought up the comprehensive need assessment that we had OHM perform for us. That need assessment detailed what needs to be done in the city of Southfield with all our facilities. And I brought the fact that I would like to see the rescue plan, the dollars that we're getting, that comprehensive need assessment be looked at and used as a guide to how best to use that $10 million that we're receiving. It's not there. And I think I mentioned that I would, I would be like a dog with a bone on this comprehensive need assessment, because that's an outlawing for us to utilize the tax dollars for the 10 to 15 years, how best to use those dollars. And I brought that up with respect to the money that we're receiving, that we are receiving. So I like to see that come in also incorporated under that, that the...
Okay, and were those on the same minutes, the same set of minutes? Or are you talking the second set?
Oh, no, the same set, April 5, on page nine.
Okay.
The subject of the American Rescue Plan presentation.
Okay. Okay.
All right.
Is it anything else?
No, not in that set of minutes. And with that, since I have the floor, I would make a motion that we accept the minutes of April 5 with the amendments as presented.
Support.
Okay, it's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz for us to accept the committee of the whole meeting of April 5, 2021 minutes as corrected or with noted corrections. Council, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Haskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and the next set of minutes, Mr. Brightwell, you had another?
Yes, I did. It's on page three. I'm trying to look at this note here. I will, I will, I will go, oh, here we go. It's on page three of the minutes and it's right after, we have the discussion of the Terry Crow's CIP, that plan. It is in the minutes, I'm not sure if this was something that was popped out of the sky, but right after, on page three, the second paragraph, in our review on the line, it says, "The mayor's statement about vacancy, about boards and commissions." That seemed totally a hundred percent of place. It had nothing to do with what Terry was talking about previously. So I'm curious, was that was an electronic blip? Or was that in association with what Terry was talking about?
Madam President, if I could take the floor for a second to ex point of clarification for a council.
Yes, please.
During that period of time, we were talking about the master plan and we were talking about boards and commissions as being a part of the master plan. So that was not out of place. It was a conversation that took place in the overall presentation. So we talked about the need to get individuals on these boards and commissions and that's when it was interjected into the conversation.
Okay, well, that's fine, nothing wrong with it, but it was not referenced. Reference and then it just hit me right in the head. I said, where did this come from? You know, it's not a reference that we were talking about anything other than what Terry had just previously committed, submitted. So if you could reference that and tie that to some discussion, it's okay with me. But I just didn't want to, a citizen reading this, you know, where did this come from? It's not referenced anywhere else. And update that point.
Okay, Madam Clerk, can you make a reference?
Right, we'll definitely make the references. Just again, as a professional courtesy, if we're having cumbersome ads to the minutes, if you can give me your recommendation edits before the meeting, so we can put them in and get them sent out to the whole body, that would be very appreciative. And just remember also that in writing these minutes prescribed by law, we're not required to do any type of transcription, which will be word for word. If council did want to move in that direction, they certainly have the autonomy. But if it's going to be multiple edits like this, just for transparency, if you let us know ahead of time, we can definitely implement all of these so they can be put online and approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I respect that I will, I'll definitely do that, but sometime my schedule, it's a few minutes before we get started. So that's, this is today, but I definitely expect the timing that I should. Historically, I do let individuals know I'll be asking some difficult questions. So, okay, Madam Clerk, I will definitely do that and keep it in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
This is Councilman Bright. Support, I'll put a motion.
I'm sorry. Okay. I'm sorry, it wasn't clear. Can I, would you please redo that because it wasn't clear and I couldn't hear? Who made the motion?
I did, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. Okay, it was motion, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. It was motioned by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the approval of the regular meeting minutes of April 12, 2021 with noted corrections by Councilman Brightwell. Madam Clerk, would you please?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Haskins?
Yes.
Thank you. And council, I don't know, we having some interference on the lines too. So maybe if we're not speaking, we can mute our lines just to help with the hearing of our minute, our meeting tonight. Thank you very much. Next, we have our consent agenda. And we have consent agenda items A through J.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yeah.
I would like to move that we approve consent agenda items A through J.
Councilman Cruz supports.
It's been motioned by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the consent agenda items A through J. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
I'm sorry, I would like, I wanted to try to pull item G, but I couldn't get off.
Yeah, it's actually, we're in the middle of a roll call vote, so it's, we have to move forward with the roll call vote.
So I said, do yes or no?
Yes or no, yep.
Okay, I said no.
Haskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yes, Councilwoman Banks.
We're having a hard time with this meeting tonight. And Councilman Brightwell had a question on item G. I think that we should hear him. If he was having a hard time connecting on, I personally am having a hard time. So I don't know about the rest of the council, but if he had a question on G, I think it's only courtesy to let him ask that question.
I agree, that's fine. Councilman Brightwell, if you have a question on G, would you go ahead with your question?
Yes, I have a question, item G. When I first got on council, I came aware of the fixing water basin water meters. And maybe Mrs. can answer this. And I did have a question, I spoke to him earlier. But I thought we would fix water, that would help us in cutting off of being, that would go for the early warning sign of whose house was leaking water. And now we're going to use this program, this is my understanding though, when we deploy the fixed water basin meter reading, that it was, that was the purpose of installing that water meter system.
I can respond to that.
I can respond to that, this is John Raffina, sorry to interrupt, sir.
Okay.
The councilman is correct, one of the benefits of the fixed base metering system was that real-time reading could allow for notification of customers regarding leaks or other problems. Unfortunately, to do that required some software. Upon assuming responsibility for DPW, I found that we neglected to purchase that software. We are in the process now of meeting with vendors and should have a proposal hopefully next month.
Okay, John, so now if I had the need for item G, I mean, there was some expansion there, I'm trying to go back to it. That I thought there would not be needed if we had a water base system, a water meter system. So do we still need G, the software that should have been purchased previously?
Well, sir, the software does need to be purchased. That aspect of the program needs to be implemented, it will be as soon as practical. The item G is basically a report to council on what has happened over the past fiscal year. In fact, it's the fiscal year prior to this year. The other thing that came up was that we didn't report it when we should have last September. So we're, this item is catching us up, and the system was not implemented for the entire fiscal year last year, so in a sense, it would have been moot. However, your point regarding the need for this monitoring and immediate notification is valid and will be addressed.
Okay, okay. Madam Chair, I hate to do this, but I did have a question about item J also.
Okay, go right ahead with your question, sir.
Okay. This is probably for Fred and Shelley. That Co-Share database contract, who will be allowed to use? I come out of the system, we pay big dollars for some proprietary information, it was very confidential, and we didn't just go using this database, we paid money for it. So who will have access to this database, which is an $18,000 database, which is, I think is
Mr. Brightwell, this is Rochelle Freeman. I'm on the call. This data system has been used for several years by my department, as well as the City Assessors Department. Planning also has access to the data. We use this to help track who our tenants are in the buildings. Assessing is on the line, and Mike can share what he uses the program for, but it helps us when we have searches. So when clients call me and they're looking for property, I can do a quick access search and give them data. This will also be helpful when the Code Enforcement Department begins their business registration program.
Okay, well, I just know that this is we would guard against individuals using it for personal business purposes.
Yeah, absolutely correct. This is, yes, we don't, we don't share the information, and we use it, and we keep the most confident information confidential.
Okay, okay, this satisfied my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry you're having technical difficulties. All right, our next items are the public hearings. And our first public hearing is on the Community Development Block Grant.
Madam President, before we get into it, may I speak for a moment?
Yes, yes, please.
I just, I just wanted to say, you know, in terms of our meeting agenda, this seems to me to be way too many public hearings in one meeting. And I would, I don't know if administration can do anything about that. I know timing can be different for, you know, and sometimes it may, things may pile up. I know we were off last week in terms of meeting, but I was really kind of blown away when this came up this week. And so I would just try to hope that administration would help us keep our agenda a little bit tighter than it already is. That's all. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, but if you remember, Terry Crow did mention to us that we would have multiple public hearings, however, none of us kind of thought that it would be as many, and I have spoken with the planning department, and they assured us that they would work more diligently with us to not have as many. But Terry did mention it to us in February and March, that he would have more items in April than normal publicly hearing wise, so.
I do recall that, but at the same time, I think that we can still do a better job at pacing or spacing out these types of things, that's all.
Yes, and I'll work with, we will work with the planning on working something out a little bit better than what we have tonight. So, but thank you for your comments. We're going to go right into public hearing now, and again, we're starting with the Community Development Block Grant.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn, Nina Greenstein will be presenting this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, and good evening, Counsel. I am presenting Community Development Block Grant Program. You see in your packet, we have a really long 46-year history with this program, which is to benefit low to moderate income people in our city. We are asking for your approval and for the public hearing over the Annual Action Plan for the upcoming fiscal year, as well as our five-year consolidated plan. For next fiscal year, we are receiving $405,531 for the HUD entitlement. This is a 5% reduction, but it's in line with the reductions other communities received. We are proposing nine activities that we've been doing for years with success. Those are three housing activities, and there are details in your packet, four public service activities, and two administration activities, one which includes fair housing, which is, I guess, our theme of the month. For the five-year consolidated plan, what we are looking at is kind of a plan overview. It's actually called Strategic Plan Overview in your packet. And we are identifying programs and activities, but also just in general, needs and goals that the city has and the residents have. And we did a lot, we did a lot of public participation to put this plan together. Starting in February, we had a survey, and followed by 30 days of public comment, we've received emails and calls, we've responded to them all. And we've been, you know, been spending time with our data from this public survey, which we got a lot of participation, so that was exciting, and hopefully it helped us organize our goals for that plan. And any questions? And that's the end of really the presentation that I have.
Okay, seeing that this is a public hearing, I have to open this up to the public. I now declare that the public hearing is open for anyone that would like to speak to the Community Development Block Grant for tonight. The public hearing is now open.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening to you, Madam Chair, the mayor, the city administrator, the city attorney, and other members of council. I, or let me say my name, first of all, Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. You know, we're still involved as a society, as a world globally, in this deadly pandemic. And we know that a lot of things have changed as a result of this pandemic. People are working from home, we've got domestic violence high and on the rise, we have a large increase in divorces. I'm looking at how much is allocated to Haven. And Haven is an organization that I've been very passionate about for many, many years. You were giving $1,000, you gave 1,500 last year, and you're proposing out of this new block grant to give only $1,500. Now, I'm looking at the administrative, and the administrative is, wow, the figures are really, really high. So because our workers, some of them, are still working from home, and the city is not open to the residents, why not take some of that money from administration and give it to Haven? $79,289, I think that you could give another $1,289 to cut the administration down to $78,000, and that would increase Haven up to $2,789. And I just want you to think about it, you know, we can't keep talking about COVID and the effects of COVID without addressing the increase in domestic violence and also in divorces. Haven has provided a wonderful service for the people that don't know what Haven does. They are the largest sexual assault and domestic violence shelter in the state of Michigan. They do phenomenal things to help these women that have been in abusive situations, and they have also transitioned a lot of women out of these abusive situations. So I want to appeal to your moral side, to your side that understands where we are right now, and increase Haven's budget $1,289. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed, and I will go to council, and I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. Is there a way that we can pull from another proposed project and give Haven a little more money? They do do a lot of great work. And I guess I would defer to
Ms. Greenstein?
Ms. Greenstein, thank you.
I think I'm going to defer to Fred on that.
The answer is yes, within the public services, as long as you don't go over 15% of your allocation, and you are within that threshold, that could be done. I will point out to council that the administration, you know, program, there is a reason why we currently staff this program with part-time employees, and frankly, our labor costs, the cost of fringe benefits, we're not able to afford a full-time person. The last few years, even as we worked to close out NSP, and have handled all of these other COVID special funds, we've made this work. Now, we've had, you know, because we've had the COVID money, I, you know, this year, I would not be opposed to taking it out of administration. So we would decrease that by, what was the amount?
Well, maybe we, I mean, if we could just add like $500, and I don't know if we can take it from the SYA, maybe just decrease theirs 500 and increase Haven. I know that, you know, you need people to administer the program.
You know, if, yeah, if I may, you know, we were trying to put some extra money into our ship entitlement, and what's happening at the county level is the home program because of some federal litigation, there will probably be less dollars coming into housing rehab. And that's probably where we have the greatest need. So, you know, I just think for easier, easy math this year, knowing we've had administrative monies come in from the CARES Act, that we take the $500 from administration and put it in to the Haven. I will point out the Southfield Youth Assistance. If, when you get into the detail of the survey we did, youth activities were rated pretty high. And I, when I started here 12 years ago, we were, I think we were around $30,000 a year going into the Southfield Youth Assistance. So my recommendation would be, take the 500 from administration, knowing we have other administrative revenues this year because of the CARES legislation.
Thank you, I'm fine with that, but we'll see what the rest of the council says. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell? I think he's still on mute, we'll come back to him. Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I too, like, Councilwoman Banks, would like to see that if, you know, Fred, what you responded to says that we can make something happen, so I would like to see at least 500 to 1,000 go in that direction during this time period, because I think it is definitely needed. And if we do have it available to do, let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you, and I echo what my colleagues have said too, if there's a way that we can put a little bit more money into Haven without not harming other programs, I mean, I'm all for that. I know you've been doing a lot with Haven, with, I know the police chief, one of the police department has been doing a lot with Haven as far as the high-risk response team, and so I know they do great work, I've seen it close, so, yeah, if we can, if we can help Haven a little bit more, I'm all for that.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Thank you. You know, I'm all for adding more money to Haven, as well as, as my colleagues have mentioned. But I would not want to see that money come out of the youth assistance. I've talked with the youth assistance, and I mean, they're, they're also stretching out their money, their money and their assistance for, that they give out. And I would hate to see money, more money come out of that allocation. If there's a different place that we can take the money from to add to Haven, I'm all for that, but I don't think we should be touching the youth assistance. They're, they are very, they are stretched thin. And I don't think that we should stretch them anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, I'm all for allocating funds, you know, where they are needed the most. And I just know doing this, during this period of pandemic, there's been a heightened nationwide, worldwide, of domestic abuse. And I know that our police department, they track that, they are tracking it on a regular basis, so. One of the best judgment of not hurting anyone, but the assistance, I mean, domestic abuse is definitely needed, so I would be in favor of this one time only additional funds to Haven for domestic abuse.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in agreement with that, with moving it from admin to Haven House.
Madam President, I just want to, I heard 500 and 1,000 to increase it to, it's presently recommended at 1,500. Are we taking it to 2,000 or 2,500?
2,500.
2,500, and I just pulled up our administrative monies in the CARE. This is the year we could do something like this, without really creating a strain on the cost of running the program.
Okay, well, how much more do you think, because we would, I mean, Haven House could use the money. If we could do more than 1,000, we could do that, with 1,500?
I think you could do 1,500.
Let's do that. Let's Let's do that. Let's increase it fifteen hundred.
All right. So we'll take that to three thousand and then the administration will go to seventy-seven, seven eighty-nine.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Now, do we need to vote on that, Madam Clerk? I have to remember.
Nina, what was your request this evening for council?
There is a vote on both the annual action plan. So that would be the budget you were just addressing as well as our five-year consolidated plan.
Okay. So Councilman, I have a motion for the five-year plan as well as the budget with the adjustments that we just spoke about.
Councilwoman Banks, I move that we approve the proposed annual action plan budget with the increase, increase to Haven for a total of three thousand dollars.
Support.
It's been motion, moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the proposed annual action plan with the amendments as discussed. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Now, we also need to approve the five-year consolidated plan.
To approve the consolidated plan?
Support.
Okay. It's been moved by Cruz and supported by, I didn't hear.
Mandelbaum?
Supported by Mandelbaum for the approval of the five-year consolidated plan. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Nice presentation, Ms. Greenstein. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your additional comments to Fred, City Administrator. We appreciate it.
Thank you. We wish we had more resources to do more. Thank you.
Yes. Our next public hearing is for the single lot assessment role hearing and confirmation. Hello, do we have someone?
Mike, are we waiting for Mike?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I think he, he's on both. Give me one second. Thank you. He's showing under the... Are you there, Mike?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, let me mute this one. Okay, Madam President, members of council, Mike Rackliff, City Assessor. Tonight, we bring before you the single lot special assessment. As contained in the ordinance code mandates the procedure for assessing certain costs incurred by the city through an assessment process. The cost which was assessed but not paid becomes a lien on the, on the land and are then placed on the tax bill via single lot special assessment. The ordinance further states that the assessor shall prepare an assessment roll covering all such charges and that council shall schedule a hearing for confirmation of the assessment roll. Such assessments and all interest in charges thereon shall, from the date of the confirmation of the roll, be and remain a lien upon the property assessed. Provisions outlined within the city ordinance allows for the full reimbursement of all costs associated with labor, material and services of such incurred expenses and is subject to this special assessment. The full reimbursement spread for 2020 is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents. It is recommended that your Honorable Body conduct a public hearing and approve the attached resolution confirming the single lot special assessment role in accordance with Chapter One, Section 1.13 of the City Code or ordinance. Therefore, your Honorable Body, I hereby certify and report that the attached 2001 Single Lot Special Assessment Role and the assessment made by me for purposes of collecting unpaid charges occurred pursuant to ordinance 1311 informs to the provisions and directions contained in the ordinance relating to such assessments. Prepared by me, Mike Rackliff, City Assessor. The role before you does outline the various different items, either by item or by department, totaling the two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and forty-two cents. If there are any individuals that are part of this assessment role and would like to speak before you tonight, they are obligated to do so before they appeal to the Michigan Tax Tribunal if that, if they so choose. And if they do have any questions regarding the bill, if you would direct them to the appropriate department that issued their invoice. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing for the single lot special assessment role hearing and confirmation. I now declare the public hearing open. Do we have anyone on the line that would like to speak to this item?
No, thank you.
So there's no one on, okay, so hearing none, I now declare that the public hearing is closed.
Madam President, if I'm out of the line, I move to approve.
Okay.
A support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum for the approval of the single lot assessment role hearing and confirmation.
I have a question, please.
Uh, yes. Question?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Radcliffe, I'm not sure if you know offhand, but is the single lot SAD loan up a lot this year versus last year?
Actually, it's relatively close to last year, although last year's was higher. The, and I believe it was the water, the water bill was on that and didn't have to be last year from the Treasuries Office. So from that perspective, it's lower than last year. But outside of that particular item, it is in line with last year, yes.
Okay, and you're right, because I don't see the water separate. So, okay, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to our next public hearing, which is on PZR 21-0001, a rezoning request for Bell's Event Studio.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Good evening, council, administration and Mayor Seiber. This is Planner Jeff Spence. I also have joining me this evening Planner Kyle Bryce. We'll try and be as brief as we can on our items this evening. Council did have the opportunity to review these on April 4th. So we again will, will proceed and make our comments as brief as possible so we can keep things moving here. The first item on your agenda actually has three parts to it. It is rezoning request, PZR 21-0001. The special land use request, PSLU 21-002. And the site planner view request, PSP 21-0001. This property is located 24624 West Ten Mile Road. And we are on the corner of West Ten Mile and Groden Drive. If you can go to the next slide, please. Thank you very much. This kind of gives you a better look at the, the property in itself. Again, it is on the corner of Groden and West Ten Mile Road. The rezoning request is to rezone the property, which is one acre in size, from ERO Education Research Office to B2 Plan Business. The special land use portion is to allow for an event center in what was a, a bank building as a place of assembly. And then the site planner view request is to convert the existing building to the event center for small banquets and other similar uses. You can go to the next slide. This slide kind of gives you an overview where that property is in relationship to Telegraph Road, Ten Mile area for the rest of the city. Next slide. A little closer view of the property, you can see that the, the bank building look that it has with the drive-through on the north side of the building. Next slide. Property for future land use is within the technology corridor subarea of Telegraph Road. Next slide. As I noted, existing zoning is ERO Education Research Office and the proposal is to go to B2. B2 is the same zoning district as the Tel Center, the, the shopping center to the north, as well as the small shopping centers directly to the east. So it seemed to make sense to, to stay with a similar zoning on this particular property. Next slide. This is the site plan for the proposal. You can see that the, the bank building remains as is. The petitioner has improved the property with the pedestrian connections with brand-new landscaping in accordance with our ordinance along both Groden Drive and Ten Mile Road. You will also note that there are some parking spaces directly to the north on the other side of the driveway. That is the, this property owner's property. And so they are proposing parking spaces there as well to meet their parking counts, which they do meet their parking counts with this particular proposal. They actually have, I believe, one or two parking spaces more on site than what they need for their proposed use. Next slide. Floor plan for this particular location. You can see the kitchen, the lounge areas, photography, as well as the layout for tables within the banquet center itself. Next slide. And elevations for the building. Really not much change to the building itself. The building is in fairly good condition. So not much, again, change by way of any facade. Next slide. And with that, I will note that Tiffany Bell, who is the petitioner, is currently online. And Madam President, if you'd like to give her an opportunity to explain her project a little bit further, planning, we'll stand by should you have any questions and concerns as we move forward.
Yes, Ms. Bell, if you would care to speak?
Yes, hi, how are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Yes, we are looking to have our business Bell Event Studio in the space at 24624 West Ten Mile Road. We decided on this particular area and specifically Southfield in general because we are, my husband and I are residents of Southfield. I've lived in Southfield my whole life, grown up, attended the public schools. My children also currently attend Southfield Public Schools. And we just, you know, enjoy being in the city and wanted to give back to the city. And therefore, when we decided to start this business, we really wanted to be in the city. And so we looked kind of all around to find a good spot for it. And we felt like this would be a great spot for our studio. This, I had a photography business, which I still do have. I did that on locations. However, I did need a indoor space. And so I thought it would be great to bring the photography side as well as the, an event space. One thing I noticed in the city is that there were a lot of larger event venues. But from talking with different clients that I work with on the photography side that were looking for spaces, they really wanted something that was more intimate, still nice, not upscale environment, but something that was definitely a more intimate, smaller space that they could do smaller events. And we felt we could use it. It could be a multi-purpose space, something for photography as well as for small events. And can also be used for meetings as well for businesses that need to use it during the week or even on the weekends for different meetings that they have. If they're looking for a space that's smaller in size, we felt like this would be a great spot for this. So with that being said, we're excited about starting and having this business in the city. Again, you know, we're residents of the city and we really wanted to stay, you know, in the city of Southfield.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing up for comments regarding PZR 21-0001. Is there anyone on the line that would like to speak to this topic?
Chair. Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, before I get started, I'd like to ask the planner, or if you can refresh my memory, is Groden east or west of Telegraph on Ten Mile?
It's west of Telegraph Road.
Oh, west of Telegraph, okay. Good evening, Ms. Bell, and how are you?
I'm doing great.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I love her story, that she was raised in Southfield her entire life. She went to Southfield Public Schools. And the fact that she could have taken this business anywhere, she decided to keep her business at home where she resides. And I think that's a beautiful story and I'm in favor of it. But I just have a couple of questions. So when you say that you have a smaller venue, is this the type of venue that a person could have a party and have access to the kitchen to cook for their own event? Or is this strictly set up with the type of license that requires that the food is catered? That's my first question. Second question is what is the total capacity that you're allowed legally for your venue? And the third question is how many parking spaces and how many parking spaces do you have for the handicap?
Okay.
And I'll yield the rest of my time, but I'm, I'm really happy to hear and see that a woman is opening up a business during this very difficult time, which is in a pandemic and we're dealing with COVID. And just the fact that you are a woman and your story about Southfield, I am so moved. And I'm looking forward to your venue. Thank you.
Thank you so much. To answer your questions, it's as far as...
Madam President, I don't mean to interrupt you. We have to wait until the public hearing is closed to answer the questions. So we just want to make sure we're in compliance. So, Madam President, if we can just wait till the public hearing is closed for the additional commentary. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, yes. Is there anyone else on the line that would care to comment or speak to this particular item? Okay, hearing none, I will now declare the public hearing closed. And now, Ms. Bell, would you go ahead and answer the questions that were brought up, if you are so inclined?
Sure. To answer your first question, in terms of the kitchenette, it is a kitchenette and the space does have a refrigerator. It will have a warming oven and it will have, it does have a microwave as well as an ice maker. And the space is used primarily for preparing food. The space is not for cooking and they are, need to have a caterer bring in the food. Now, the space is to be used for preparing food, getting things set up. And that is what the space is for, if they have anything that they need to put in the refrigerator. There is also counter space for, you know, getting things set up. But that is what the kitchenette is for. It is not a cooking kitchen. So the, the space is not going to be for that and they do need to have a... And they do need to have a caterer they need to use in order to, um, have an event where they're bringing in food for that. And then, secondly, in terms of capacity, the space is for 99 or less people. We really wanted a space that was, um, a more intimate space. We didn't want a large banquet facility. That's one reason why it's called Bell Event Studio, um, and not Banquet Center, you know, banquet facility, because we really wanted it to be something where if someone wanted to have a small intimate, um, event, we really wanted it to be for small weddings, you know, small receptions. They don't want a big, you know, banquet facility to have that, just a more intimate, um, space. And, you know, with the time of us being in COVID, we felt like this would be a good time to, you know, bring something that is more intimate, where people, you know, they just don't want to have the big crowds and the big events. So it, the space is for 99 or less people. And then in terms of parking, um, I'm going to defer to my architect, who is on the line, because I don't want to misquote, um, how many parking spaces that there is on this property.
Uh, yes, my name's Jason Fox from Expressive Architecture in Southfield, Michigan. And, uh, we have, uh, 41 parking spots, two of which are handicap accessible. Uh, and those are two are right there at the building line, uh, to the west, uh, the west elevation.
Okay.
And if I may, through, through the chair, um, to the council, the total number of parking spaces required for this use is 39 spaces. And again, as noted, there are 41 on-site. And the two, uh, barrier-free spaces that were noted, uh, are, do meet the, the total number of barrier-free spaces required, uh, for the to- total number of parking that's being proposed.
Thank you.
Number of handicap spaces? I'm sorry.
He said it was two. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, open it up to council now. And I'll start with you, Mr. Cruz.
And that, that was the only question I had, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. What was it, I'm sorry, what was the number of park- parking spaces again?
The total number of parking spaces required is 39, with 41 proposed or provided.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? If I may, through, if I may, through the chair to the council, um, because right now we're just discussing the rezoning, that was what the public hearing was for. Um, with, if, if we could kind of keep our comments related to the zoning portion, uh, because then we will have a, a, uh, public hearing on the special land use, and then, uh, ultimately discuss the site plan. Um, because the, right now we're discussing the rezoning only, um, if the questions and comments could just be related just to the rezoning, um, that would be helpful.
Thank you for that reminder, Mr. Spence. Um, Mr. Mandelbaum?
Uh, no, as it relates to the zoning, I do not have any comments. I will hold my comments for, uh, the later site, the later public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
I'm all set, thank you.
And Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, no question, but thanks, Ms. Bell, for choosing Southfield. I think Southfield chose you first, but, uh, you chose us last. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, council, um, I can entertain a vote, and then we can do the, uh, ordinance introduction, depending on which way the vote goes.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion that we... PZR 21-0001 rezoning request of Bell Event Studios LLC.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to approve PZR 21-0001, the rezoning request of Bell's Event Studio LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Morris? I'm sorry, that's worse a habit, sorry, Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Uh, council, can we have the introduction of, uh, ordinance 1735?
Madam Chair, Councilman Bright...
Go ahead, Brightwell, go ahead, Brightwell.
Okay. I move the ordinance number 1735.
Support.
It's, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the introduction of ordinance 1735. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
And, and once again, if you're not speaking, could you please mute your line? We're having a few, uh, technical difficulties, and it's very hard to hear. We have a lot of noise in the background. Thank you.
Madam President, if, if I may, um, if the slides could be advanced, two slides, please? And the next... Thank, yeah, thank you, yeah, that's good right there, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, yeah, um, I, all, all that I was going to note was that, um, the, because we did already kind of go through all the various issues with the rezoning, the, the special land use and the site plan, um, that this was the, uh, the resolution, or at least the, the planner's recommendation for the PSLU. Uh, it does note hours of operation as well. Um, Ms. Bell did note, uh, during the planning commission meeting, uh, that she would limit her hours of operation, uh, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to midnight on Friday and Saturday, and 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM on Sunday. Uh, other than that, staff has no other comments at this time. Uh, and again, you would need to have a public hearing on this particular special land use as well.
Thank you. Um, I would like to declare the, uh, public hearing open for PSLU 21-002, Special Use Request Only.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hi. Uh, thank you, Madam President, for telling people to turn their mics off, because, uh, distortion is very loud and piercing on the ears when you're on the phone. So thank you so much for that. Uh, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. I am in support of Ms. Bell's project. When you say "event studio," it gives me the impression of New York, because there are a lot of venues that are in what they call "studio-type places" or, uh, buildings, and it's a really good thing. But I just want to be clear, and I like the hours, and thank you, uh, Planner Spence, for saying the hours. The only thing that I hope the city is clear on, and Ms. Bell, is that with this special use request, that it's only going to be for what you say it's going to be submitted by your paperwork, and not somewhere along the way you attempt to change it without coming back to the city to say that there's been a change. Because we've had a lot of developers that started out one way to do something, and then changed it, and then after they changed it, they came back and tried to ask for approval. So, um, that's the only thing that I would urge and just say to you respectfully. But I am in support of PSLU 21-0002, the Special Use Request for Bell's Event Studio. And good luck with your business, Ms. Bell. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Hello, is there someone else? Okay, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, I'll defer to you now. And I'll start with Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you, uh, no, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, no, I have, I have no questions. I think this is a, a great use, and I'm excited for, uh, to open up and, uh, wish them all the best luck, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
No. No, no questions, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
And Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are you accepting the motion now?
Yes.
Um, well, in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we approve PSLU 21-0002.
For it.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the acceptance of PSLU 21-002, the Special Use Request for Bell's Event Studio. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, through the chair, if you could advance one more slide, please, to the site plan. There should be a site plan slide. That might be a little bit far, it, yeah, it's probably much farther down in the, in the, um... It become, yeah, it would be after all these items. So it'd be under the site plan portion. I apologize, Madam Chair, um, we should have put these in a different, um, order, with the site plan directly after. Continue on. Continue on. Keep going. Keep going. Continue on. Continue on. Continue, okay? Almost there, I think. Okay, so this is, and if you could advance to the next slide. Yeah, again, I apologize, Madam Chair, um, we should have, uh, put this in a different order. Uh, but with regard to the site plan, this is the, the planner's recommendation. The only ex, the only other item that I would add to this, uh, is a, a zoning board of appeals waiver that's needed. Uh, when we changed, or looked to change the zoning from the ERO to the B2, um, the, the setback requirements are different for the B2 zoning. So because of that, it does require, uh, a side yard setback for the east side of the building. Uh, in B2, it's 50 feet on all sides. Uh, it's only 24 foot, or, uh, or 26 feet on the, on the side yard at this time, so they would need a waiver of 24 feet. Other than that, the, uh, these are the typical, uh, conditions that go along with the site planner view, along with the hours of operation.
Okay, thank you. Since there is no public hearing required for site plans, uh, council, do you have any questions or comments, since we've just previously talked about this? Nothing for the, for the planner? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion for this?
This is, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to move that we approve PSP 21-0001.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for us to approve PSP 21-0001's site plan review request for Bell's Event Studio, with the, uh, the request for it going to the zoning board of appeals for a waiver. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, Madam President. Uh, if you could go back now, back to, um, number 15, then we would, uh, now take a look at PSLU 21-003, as well as PSP 21-003. Uh, and Madam President, um, Planner Bryce will be making the presentation on this this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, right there, thank you. Uh, good evening, council. Um, as Planner Spence mentioned, this is PSLU 21-0003, and PSP 21-0003 Petitioner GDP Group on behalf of the owner, RPT Realty. Uh, this is 28550 Telegraph Road. So this is the east side of Telegraph, uh, between, uh, the lodge and Northwestern Highway and 12 Mile. It's going to be, uh, a leased out lot. Uh, this is in front of Michael's, uh, the pet store, uh, Best Buy, um, in that general area. Uh, the existing zoning on-site is RS Regional Shopping, which does permit restaurants. Uh, what the applicant is looking for is a special land use to allow for a drive-through for that restaurant. Um, the site plan review component is to construct a 4,978 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with a drive-through. Uh, next slide, please. Um, at, at council's request, this is a, a further back view of the site. Um, kind of zoomed out, so you can see the location, uh, between, uh, the 696, uh, Northwestern Highway and 12 Mile. It's kind of in the middle, um, of that town, 12 area. Uh, next slide, please. And this is a close-up of the site, so it's on a corner, Telegraph and the, uh, private access drive into the site. Um, so currently, right now, this is just, uh, the far edge of the parking lot. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so right now, the future land use calls for, uh, regional mixed use. It's within the Northwestern Highway sub-area, and the current zoning is, uh, regional shopping, uh, much like the entire eastern side of Telegraph in that area. Uh, next slide, please. So here's a, a site plan, um, of the site. So the, the restaurant's going to be situated in the middle with a significant drive-through that goes around it. Um, in addition, there's a, a access aisle on the eastern side that goes up to the dumpster enclosure that they have. Um, they do have three, uh, handicap parking spaces. Um, we did spend a lot of time, Planner Crode and Fire Marshal Mike Alba, uh, especially, uh, had a lot of meetings with the applicant, um, just to fully engineer the site, so it was completely safe, um, and fire accessible. So you'll notice that there is a 20-foot access on the east and west sides of the drive-through. Um, and then there is a seven-foot, uh, security, uh, crosswalk along the northern edge, and that's really for emergencies only, um, if emergency services have to park in that private access drive on the, the north side. They do have a bike rack, and on the eastern, um, end of the building, they do have a outdoor patio with six, uh, tables. Um, next slide. Uh, here's a colored landscaping plan, it's probably easier to see everything I just talked about on this. Um, so they do have substantial landscaping surrounding the building and its drive-throughs. Um, you can see the, the kind of, uh, that beige color, those are the ordering canopies, and you can see the substantial, uh, drive-through area around the building for that maximum, uh, fire suppression safety. Uh, in addition, they are installing that sidewalk on Telegraph and putting in a pedestrian connection that goes to the building. Uh, next slide, please. Here's a photometric plan of the site, um, showing that it does, the, the foot candles, the lighting does diminish as it, here's the property line. Uh, next slide. Um, here's a map that shows the, uh, leasing plan of the site. Um, so many parking spaces are being, uh, removed... many parking spaces are being, uh, removed, um, and, uh, twenty-three are going to be developed on the site. In addition, there are thirteen stalls that are, uh, technically unusable due to drive-through stacking. Um, that being said, there really is substantial parking on site for this development. Um, so it's not going to, uh, impact, uh, the existing stores, uh, along this area. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is their, uh, traffic, uh, management plan, so this shows how cars are going to enter and exit the site. Uh, note that north is going to the left in this figure, so east is up. Um, so the blue arrow and the red arrow show, uh, routes into the site. Um, and the green and the orange arrow show routes out of the site. Uh, they do show the, uh, stop signs that are going to help regulate traffic, as, as well as the stars which are showing, uh, proposed directional signage, um, from Chick-fil-A. Um, and again, this is just to, uh, safely facilitate people, uh, from Telegraph to the store itself. Um, and I'll let our, our contacts explain this, uh, in a little bit further detail. Um, next slide, please. Uh, here's a perspective of the site. You can see the, uh, the pickup canopy. Um, this is looking at the western and southern faces of the building. Uh, next slide. Here's some existing interior photos of their current model. Next slide, yep, and here's a existing, uh, exterior photo of what their stores look like. Here are the proposed elevations for the site. Uh, this is their order point canopy, just showing the elevations of what that looks like. The patio plan that I mentioned. Uh, so you can see the, the tables and chairs that are going to be proposed for the east side of the building. And the floor plan for the store as well. Okay, uh, so Madam Chair, with your permission, at this time, um, I would like to turn this over to, uh, Justin, uh, Lurk from Chick-fil-A.
Uh, yes, please.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Bryce, Madam Chair, uh, members of the commission. Thanks again for having us in front of you. I know we got a lot of, uh, meetings on the agenda, so I'll just try to be brief. We talked about, uh, these slides, these next few slides, um, last time, no changes, no changes here. Um, if we want to go to the next, next slide here, um, you know, we talked about just the, the community events, uh, partnering with, uh, local schools and charities and, and family nights and just kind of bringing people together over a warm, uh, a warm meal and a warm smile. Um, next, next slide here, please, and just some of the, some of the commitments to the community that we talked about. Um, some of the philo, rampant, uh, philanthropic, uh, donations here, the seventy-five million donated to, um, over fifty-three thousand of our restaurant team members to attend, uh, attend college. You know, one point seven meals served to those needing, uh, those, those in need through our Chick-fil-A Shared Foundation Program. Uh, as, as talked about last time, that's just a, a program our operators, uh, voluntarily participate into, and they, they share wholesome foods to, to those that are in need within a five to ten mile radius of each, each location. Uh, like we talked about last time, each, each location is individually owned and operated, uh, by a, by a local franchisee. That, that person is typically selected once we go under construction. Uh, we're looking forward to bring in anywhere from, I know this slide says sixty to eighty team members, but we've been seeing those numbers creep up over, over last year or so, and right now, uh, anywhere from seventy-five to one hundred and fifteen, one hundred and twenty, um, team members per location. That's a mixture of full-time, uh, salary-paid, uh, positions and part-time, um, hourly-paid positions. Again, all, all local, uh, local members that are able to come to the store each, each and every day. Um, we talked about it last time, open Sunday, uh, open Monday through Saturday, closed on Sundays, and our typical hours are six-thirty, uh, AM to ten PM. So, we appreciate everyone's, uh, comments last time, and I wanted to address a few of those, or the, the ones that were, were brought up. Obviously, traffic was a big concern last time, and as, uh, Mr. Bryce, uh, talked about, just showing the incoming and the outgoing traffic with the stop signs and the directional signage. There was, uh, there were some questions about getting MDOT's feedback, so we reached back out to MDOT. We sent them the site plan again, and, you know, they, they replied back, they, uh, to us that they did not require traffic and impact, that there are traffic impact analysis, under the assumption that all restaurant queuing was being handled within the existing development, an adjacent parking lot avoiding any queuing onto, um, northbound Telegraph in the same manner that we're operating our other restaurants in here. So a-again, that was their response to our site plan, so they reviewed it. They didn't have any issues with it. So we wanted to address that again, as traffic and specifically, MDOT was brought up last time. Um, there were, there was a, a question regarding, um, you know, just what Chick-fil-A is doing as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion, you know, given all the social unrest. So I did want to address that and just to at least give us, uh, one specific highlight here about, um, Chick-fil-A's True Inspiration Awards. Um, this is a program that was created in two thousand and fifteen, so while that's not new, um, I wanted to highlight one specific piece of that, but the program was created in fifteen to honor the legacy of our founder, Truca Kathy. Um, through these annual grants, Chick-fil-A is proud to celebrate and support nonprofit organizations who are black-led and serve communities of color, and who are working in areas, uh, of education, hunger, and homelessness. Um, and what I wanted to highlight was, in June of last year, June of two thousand and twenty,
Oops.
it was, it was announced that, that, um, that donation for two thousand and twenty, um, in addition to some of the other gifts benefiting communities of color, um, Chick-fil-A was awarding a five-million-dollar grant for nonprofits that are black-led and serving the black community. So that was over quadruple, uh, the donation that we had, um, had given in two thousand and nineteen, so I wanted to highlight that because that was one of the specific questions. Um, and then there was a, a question relating to our support, um, and of the LGBTQ plus community. Uh, we talked about it briefly last time, that, you know, in, in two thousand and twenty, there was, um, discussions about Chick-fil-A's owning on, on three specific categories. Um, and that we're, we're focused on youth hunger, we're focused on homelessness, and we're focused on education, which impacts all of youth. Um, and we also talked about last time, just the, the local, um, for each location that we open up, there's a twenty-five-thousand-dollar donation to the local community, local food bank, uh, to help, um, help against the, the war against hunger as well. So wanted to, wanted to bring for some of those highlights and, and hopes to answer most of the questions from last time, but we are here to address any, uh, and other questions, especially.
Um, thank you. Um, this is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing up for PSLU twenty-one dash zero 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 three, but please keep our questions to the special use request only. Um, the, I now declare the public hearing open.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
Okay, hi. Good evening, Madam Chair. Um, Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number is two four eight three four six zero four three nine. For the special land use request, I'm looking at the drawing, and I am not able to ascertain where this property is. I lived in this area for almost thirty-four years, and I'm looking at the drawing, and I see Northwestern Highway, I see Telegraph, I see Twelve Mile, and I see the M-ten corridor. So is this the old Copper Canyon location? Or, because you said east of Telegraph, it's like the address doesn't match up with the Between Street, and I'm having a difficult time, uh, trying to look at it, but the reason why they're asking for a special land use request is what specifically? I didn't hear it, and I want to compliment the petitioner. I guess they told you that I would ask you about greater inclusion, respect, diversity, and equity as it relates to your business, because I am a diversity advocate, and I am very concerned about that. So you did say that, you addressed my concern. It sounds like you're going to be a good corporate citizen, but I need more clarity on this address as it relates to between Twelve Mile and Northwestern Highway. If you can start giving a landmark, like the former Copper Canyon, or next to the Glassman Old's dealership, or the, the hotel on Northwestern Highway that has changed their name five or six times, it would just be more helpful. And I know that you don't want to have me to ask the question, and then you respond back to me, so I guess I'm just going to have to relinquish my thoughts, and then I can maybe, uh, sum it up for the rezoning request. Thank you so much.
Um, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else for the public hearing? Okay, hearing none. I now declare the public hearing closed. Um, Kyle, did you want to, uh, address the location once again?
Uh, yeah, certainly, Madam Chair. So i- it's, it's on Telegraph. Uh, it's basically in front of Michael's and Alta and Pet Smart. Um, there's a Chipotle on the other side of the access aisle. Um, so right now, there's no building there. It's just a, a, it's just a parking lot. So they'd be constructing an outlot, uh, in the far corner, right up along Telegraph Road.
Okay.
This is, is further up, you know, away from Copper Canyon. This is up closer to Twelve Mile. Um, so it's across the street from Wendy's, um, so it's a bit north of, of Glassman. Um, probably across the street from Wendy's is the best place to, to identify it.
Okay, thank you for that. I will now open up to council. Council, do you have any questions for, uh, this special, uh, use request, uh, from, uh, GD, GPD Group? And I'll start with you, uh, Councilman Mandelbaum.
Uh, no, I have, I have no questions. The, the only concern I did have was the traffic, just because, uh, that intersection at Twelve Mile and, uh, Telegraph is one of the worst intersections, probably in Oakland County. Um, I'm glad that they did reach out, um, to see if a traffic impact analysis is needed. I do see that there is ample, um, waiting areas or, um, stacking within the parking lot itself if needed. Um, I guess it's always a good issue for a company to have, that when they have issues with traffic open, you know, when they open up a new, a new store. Um, but that's, that was my only concern, but, um, I, I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, thank you. Um, while I think Chick-fil-A would be an excellent complement to our city, and I really think that their business model is a wonderful one, um, I just think this is in the wrong location due to the traffic congestion along Telegraph Road. Since we talked about this, I've been traveling this area different times during the day, and coming from Ten Mile, traveling north to Twelve Mile, um, like the, the exit ramp from the expressway, sometimes it, the traffic's backed up to that point. So with the addition, additional traffic because of this restaurant, which I know, you know, people are going to frequent, I just don't know how Telegraph Road is going to handle it. And, you know, at times when it is bumper-to-bumper, I have pulled off to try to figure out why is this bumper-to-bumper? Where are the cars coming from? There's no accident, and heaven forbid if there was an accident, especially, like where the blue lines were, coming out, you know, the turnaround, and then traveling southbound on Telegraph Road. Have, if there was something there, uh, there would be no place for the cars to go. So, I, I'm disappointed to hear a traffic study was not done for this area. It would have made me feel a lot more comfortable. I love the concept. I love the restaurant. I just think this is the wrong location. We can control it internally, and there's plenty of room internally, but how are the people going to get there and how are they going to exit? Is my biggest concern, and I'm really torn. Someone can help me with an answer, I don't know, but I'm torn on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, no questions. All my questions, uh, were answered during the last session, um, on this and this session. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Uh, yes, um, I'm kind of the same way. I, I, I do definitely understand where, uh, Councilwoman Banks is coming from, uh, in terms of the location, but I, I think it's a, a doable situation, and, uh, that we can make this happen. So, um, I have no, no real concerns, no big concerns as it relates to that. Uh, I would like to ask Justin if he, he could reach out to me. I would like to talk to you just a little bit further about some diversity stuff, but, uh, that's, you know, off the, but that's not stopping anything. I think that you guys are, uh, have done your due diligence, and I would love to see you, uh, here in Southfield, so you definitely have my support.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, just kind of, going off of what, uh, Councilwoman Banks said, yeah, uh, the traffic is kind of a concern, is still, still a concern to me. Um, and before I go, before I do that, I want to thank you for addressing some of the, the questions we, we brought up. Um, talking about the diversity and inclusion, um, and talking about the, the change in the donate, the na- donations that, uh, Chick-fil-A, uh, has made. I still have a lot of major concerns about some of their past donations to L, anti-LGBT groups, but, um, you did, uh, you did address that, but the traffic here is, um, uh, my issue, particularly, when you're, when I'm looking at the, where the orange line and the red line are. So if you are leaving, um, you, your orange line, and you're leaving, and you're making this left here, um, I'm just curious, what about the other cars that are at the other stores? Um, because I'm assuming they're going to be going in the sa- you know, they're going to be going, uh, north and south, um, and, and town twelve. Uh, one, my first question is, one, is there, when you're trying to leave, uh, you're the orange line, you're trying to leave, is there like someone there, is there like something stopping the cars that are the red lines so you can get out of here and make this left? And also, my second question is, what about the other traffic that is not a part of Chick-fil-A that is also going through? How are they, are they gonna be able to, you know, are, are, is it going to be enough space for a red line of cars plus the additional traffic that is not a part of the Chick-fil-A, that the restaurant, is it going to be enough space for them to go by? Those are my two questions. So if anyone has an answer for that for me.
Uh, Kyle, would you like to answer, or Mr. Lurk?
Do you want me to zoom in there?
Yeah, Justin, go ahead, but, uh, can we move the slides, uh, back a few to the, um,
Overall plan?
Yeah, with the, the color here. Yes, thank you.
Great. So, Mr. Hoskins, I, I think what I, what I heard you asking was, you pick up your food, your red car, you pick up your food, and you can, as you're leaving, you're either following the orange line, which is a path, doesn't mean that there's cars stacked back-to-back-to-back all the, all the time, um, showing the route. Um, so the orange line or the green line, but the concern was at the orange line as it intersects the red line with cars coming in. Uh, again, you know, the, these lines are just meant to represent the path, not necessarily that, you know, the cars are stacked up on-site all day, every day. Um, I, I think, I think the main thing to talk about here is, what we're used to seeing is anywhere from, you know, fifteen hundred, uh, transactional day. Uh, it, it's not like we're going to be operating the, the Indy five hundred on this, uh, on this site. Uh, it's not like we're going to be operating the, the Indy 500 on this, uh, on this site. And a lot of those 1,500 to 2,500 cars per day are people that are in the area already. Um, while, while we are a newer location to the area and while we may attract some new, uh, customers to this area, that you're going to see the majority of our customers, which is what we're used to seeing, being local to this area as well. Um, but the specific question was how does, how does a car on the orange line, um, make a left out when there's cars on the red line coming in? Just like any, just like if Chick-fil-A weren't here and you were a customer leaving one of the drive aisles, you would just wait until there was an open, open spot, make your left and, and go. So, um, that's, I, I don't know if that answers your specific question or not, um, Mr. Hoskins. But I think that, that does.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it does. But, um, my only concern would be if there was traffic backed up to, I mean, uh, from what you're saying, you don't expect that. But that was my concern is there, if there's traffic backed up all the way to where, you know, you know, Telegraph, you know, some, their cars are trying to get into on Telegraph, um, where the red line starts and there's a traffic all the way. Or even, even if it's not that much, even if they're in there, but it's still traffic where it's blocking that, the exit for the orange line.
Sure.
And I only say this because yesterday I experienced this just leaving Meyer. Where, where they, uh, on a Sunday morning where, you know, I had to wait, uh, to make a left to go on to 12 Mile. Um, so if I had, if I experienced a little bit of a wait, um, just leaving Meyer on a Sunday morning, I'm thinking, I'm thinking about someone who, if there's a line of cars here, um, in their way as they're trying to make this left as well. In addition, if there is a line of cars also, what about the other traffic too? That is not a part of the, you know, who are not going to the, the, the restaurant. They're just, you know, going through.
Yeah, that, this is not an uncommon situation for us to develop a parking lot into a, into a restaurant. And, you know, we've co-mingled with other tenants. Uh, I know we've had a lot of discussions with RPT, the current landlord here. They've had a lot of discussions with the major, uh, tenants that you see on the site plan here as well. And, uh, have gotten sign off from all of those, all of those tenants as well. So I, I think, you know, I hate to boil it down to be a, as simple as it is, but it's, it's just common driving practices, right? Like if there's a car, uh, and, you know, wanting to get out of a lane and you see cars in front of you stop, stops, then you just kind of, you stop as well and let that car out in front of you. If there are, if there are cars on the red line waiting to get into the drive-through to block the orange line. That's, that's specifically what I'm talking about there.
Um, and if, and if I may, uh, I, I hope this, that answered your questions. But if, if not, um, we, there will also be wayfinding signs as well as, um, people out for the first couple of, uh, I don't know how days, weeks or whatever they said to help with the flow of traffic. So people can get used to that. But again, I think it's just like everything else on Telegraph and 12 Mile. We have to have a driver courtesy. I think we had the same questions when we, uh, opened the, um, big boy down the street on Telegraph and we were concerned with the traffic going in and out of there as well. And we asked for the study and, uh, Oakland County gave us pretty much the same answer that they gave to tonight. Um, and it seems to be working fine right now. So again, I think all of our questions are very valid. They are putting in wayfinding signs. They are, um, going to help with the direction of traffic and helping with that flow for the first, you know, times that it's open. But again, uh, all of your questions are valid and I think that, um, these things will help. So, uh.
Well, I, um, I'm, I have no more questions then.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, did anyone else have a comment or question regarding this, uh, special use request tonight? Okay. Uh, Kyle, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, no, Madam President, I, I do not.
No? Okay, thank you. Um, counsel, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I make a motion for the, well, I make a motion for, I move that we approve PSLU 21-003, special use request of GPD Group.
Support.
It's been motioned by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of PSLU 21-0003, the special use request of GBD Group, uh, on behalf of the owner, RPT Realty. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
No.
Council President?
Yes.
Um, I'll point a privilege pre, please?
Yes.
I'd like to, um, indicate that the only reason for my no vote is due to the traffic congestion which presently exists along Telegraph Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, can, may I ask just for, uh, uh, point of privilege as well?
Yes, sir.
Can we do that as it relates to motions? And we may have to ask the clerk, uh, clerk in terms of that. Um, you know, you see the yes or no vote as far as I'm concerned, but, um, I don't know if we can add certain things, addendums to our no votes.
It was, uh, Councilman Cruz, it was not during the, uh, actual vote. So as a council member, you are privy to a point of privilege after the vote. And, uh, there's no censorship at this point as to what you can say for that. So it was proper, it was done properly.
All right, thank you. Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. And, uh, nothing, nothing, uh, towards my, my colleague just simply asking the question. Um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Bryce, did you want to do the site plan for this as well?
Um, yes, um. Planner Spence, I mean, do we have to look at the next slide with the PSLU information or we're all set with that? I think you're, I muted.
Madam Clerk, can we do both site plans if we're going to do that? I mean, Madam President.
Um, well, I will say in this one because it's related to the same item. But I mean, we could do it right after that, sure. I don't see why we couldn't. We could take them out of order.
Um, the, the site plan, I think it should be on, uh, slide 78, if I can recall correctly. Uh, looks like one more, please. Okay, here it is. Yeah, uh, Planner Spence, I think you are on mute.
Sorry, uh, I apologize for that. I have to remember I have two buttons here to push. Um, yeah, I have nothing more to add here except that, um, with the site plan, um, because within the, that particular zoning district, building setback is 75 feet. Um, the petitioner is proposing 50 feet, uh, which would require a 25-foot setback, uh, for the front yard building. Uh, I will note however, that we do have two outbuildings that are directly north of this particular site. Uh, one of those is within 33 feet of Telegraph Road, the other within 41 feet, uh, to which the zoning board of appeals has given, um, setback waivers for. So other than the, the setback waiver, uh, there are also cross-accessing in parking agreements that would be required, uh, along with, uh, all the other standard conditions here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, counsel? Uh, do you have any questions or anything regarding the site plan? Um, hearing none, we can go for a motion.
Chair, this is Councilman Brightwell. I move that we approve site plan PSP 21-0003.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of site plan PSP 21-003. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
No.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Point of privilege, please?
Yes.
Noted that, um, due to, my no vote was due to the traffic congestion which presently exists along Telegraph Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Um, the, the next item for public hearing, uh, is PZR 21-0002, the rezoning request for SLT Holdings?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so this, uh, next particular item, uh, is for, uh, the Copper Canyon site, uh, which is on Northwestern Highway, uh, and we are just off or between Telegraph Road and then Bell Road. Um, the petitioner, uh, is looking for a rezoning of this particular property from RMU, multiple family high-rise to B3 general business, uh, along with the accompanying site plan PSP 21-0002. And that is to convert the existing restaurant to a grocery and market that would be related to New Soul Garden, uh, containing 14,465 square feet. Um, just as a note, uh, at council's meeting, uh, on April 12th, um, you had approved, um, uh, removing this particular property, uh, an agreement to remove, remove this property from the landmark consent judgment. Uh, so this particular property was part of a consent judgment that included, uh, again, the Copper Canyon, the New Soul Garden Restaurant, the office building, building directly to the north as well as the hotel, uh, that is directly to the east. These were all part of a consent judgment. Um, the, um, New Soul Garden Restaurant was removed from, from the landmark consent judgment a, a few years back when they did their expansion and change. And again, because this is the same ownership, uh, they're, they have requested and council did approval, uh, on the 12th, um, in agreement to remove this property from the consent judgment as well. Uh, so again, by doing that, uh, it does require a rezoning of the property to be three general business to allow for the restaurant use. Next slide, please. Uh, so in context, this kind of gives you an idea of where the property is, uh, in relationship to, uh, M10, Telegraph Road Civic Center, uh, 12 Mile Road, Telegraph and Bell. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is a, a closer look at the Copper Canyon, uh, previous Copper Canyon restaurant site. Um, the site is in relatively poor condition, uh, and actually has been closed for a number of years. I believe it's either seven or eight. Um, and actually has become quite an eyesore, uh, over those years. A number of people have looked at this property, uh, for, for development. I believe a, a particular automotive company or motorcycle company looked at it. Um, none of those projects ever came to fruition or moved forward. Um, New Soul Garden, uh, did look at this property and originally had planned on putting a grocery store on their New Soul Garden Restaurant site directly north of the restaurant. Uh, however, they decided to go a different route and because the Copper Canyon building was available, uh, and it was an opportunity to actually, um, um, take a, a site that had become rather blighted and actually bring it back to life. Um, they did make this proposal for, for this restaurant, or for this restaurant site for grocery. Next slide, please. Um, as I had noted, um, this is the New Soul Garden Restaurant site that got approved a few years back. Um, and then the former market, uh, was shown on that north portion, just north of the, of the restaurant. Uh, in lieu of, uh, putting the grocery store there, that particular area, uh, would be renovated, uh, with soil and, and, and seed and would go to green space until such time as the owner of that property, uh, would look at a potential for maybe adding something else to that particular property there. Next slide. Mixed use, uh, regional mixed use development for future land use. Next slide. And as I noted, current zoning is RMU, that's the brown area. And proposed zoning is B3 general business. Next slide. Uh, this is the proposed site plan, colored site plan for the site. Uh, it does have all of the requirements, uh, that we have for site plan, including the, uh, extended landscaping along the roadways, pedestrian connections, um, the, the bike rack, um, barrier-free parking spaces. Uh, they are also including off of the southeast corner of the building, both charging stations for electrical vehicles, uh, as well as four spaces for pickup for groceries. Uh, obviously with, with the pandemic, um, a lot of, um, uses ha- have gone to delivery services or to outside pickup. Uh, so they are being proactive here and actually showing these and, and putting, making them as part of their plan. Next slide. Uh, this is a little more detail on the landscape plan. Next slide. Uh, elevations. Uh, so this particular, uh, building will be renovated on the outside to make the facade look similar to the New Soul Garden Restaurant. Uh, that way you get some continuity, uh, along Northwestern Highway there, uh, with the same tip, with the same kind of look. Next slide. Interior floor plan. Next slide. And then with that, uh, I do know that Rebecca Lazarus, who is representing the owner, uh, is on the line right now and can explain her project further. Uh, Madam President, if, if you would allow her to, to do so.
Yes, of course. Ms. Lazarus?
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. Um, Honorable Counsel and Mayor, I'll try to be very brief. Um, my name's Rebecca Lazarus and I represent New Soul, um, SLT Holdings of Southfield Development Corporation. First, we want to thank you for, um, approving our request earlier this month to vacate 27522 Northwestern Highway from the 1972 consent judgment, which limited the use of this property. Now that this consent judgment has been lifted, we request your approval to rezone the property to allow my client to redevelop it into a world-class international Asian grocery store, which we will name New Soul Market. The market will have a similar look and feel as New Soul Plaza, which is located next door, both in interior and exterior finishes. The building materials will be of the same quality and we will follow a similar color palette to give the market an upscale unified appearance, inviting visitors and travelers along the busy M10 696 corridor. As an Asian destination, we anticipate the market will attract customers from across Michigan and Ohio and we anticipate creating over 45 new local jobs. Upon your approval, we look forward to breaking ground soon and we welcome any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing up at this time for PZR 21-0002. If there's anyone on the line that would like to speak to this, please, uh, do so now.
Hello?
Yes, hi Pam.
Hi, how you doing? Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I believe this is the Copper Canyon building that's located on Northwestern. that's located on Northwestern Highway. If I am correct, I think it's a great thing that someone is finally deciding to take over that eyesore that at one time used to be a state-of-the-art building back during those times. I have a couple of concerns. If this property in nineteen seventy-two had a consent judgment, meaning that there were certain things that you could and could not do, it would have been transparent to present with your package and have it online, the copy of that consent judgment. And we're talking about a transparent government. We have to include those, uh, archaic or archive types of documents that exist within our city, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I'm concerned about the B3. I know when Walmart wanted to come to the city and we blocked their development, we were concerned about the B3 and some of the ramifications of the B3, meaning they can go from this to this as long as it's within the B3 rezoning. So, I support the project. They did a beautiful building, um, and the restaurant portion of it, it's absolutely pleasing to the eyes when you drive down Northwestern Highway. I'm happy that they took over Copper Canyon. Hopefully, they didn't have a lot of taxes to pay or a lot of water bills, because they had issues when that property was first out there, uh, and put on the market. So I'm happy about that, but I just want the city to be a little bit more transparent with these properties that have consent judgments. We need to know what those judgments were and be able to read it, and then it's always a good idea to disclose why you're releasing the consent, uh, ju- the consent judgment. And a good reason to release it might be something as simple as, we have not been able to sell this property, but we have an owner that's vested in the community, that has been in the community for a while, built a new facility, made it beautiful and pleasing to the eye, and now they want to take over something else and add to their development. That is no problem, but just be transparent city to the residents, and we would really appreciate that. Thank you so much and good luck. I am in support of the rezoning request, but I've got concerns about B3. Can we look for something else? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. I will now declare the public hearing closed.
Yeah, if I, if I may, um, Madam President, to the question about B3.
Yes.
Um, when New Soul Garden Restaurant went through this process, um, that one was rezoned to B3. Um, properties directly to the east of, of this particular site, the Copper Canyon site, are also zoned B3. Um, so it just made sense to do B3 on this property as well, to be consistent.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel, we've had this presented to us, uh, in our closed session and several other times. So at this point, I'll just ask, does anyone on council have any questions or comments that they would like to make regarding this rezoning request?
No comments.
Okay, so hearing none, then I can just ask for, uh, a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Brightwell. Oh, okay. Um, I move that we approved rezoning request of SLT Holdings LLC.
Let's support that.
Support. Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, for us to approve PZR 21-0002, the rezoning request of SLT Holdings. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
And Amanda Baum?
Yes.
Thank you, Counsel. Uh, I'll also intro- uh,
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, I move, uh, introducing Ordinance 1736.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, I'm sorry, Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval, uh, for the introduction of Ordinance Number 1736. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Amanda Baum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
And, and now, Counsel, can we also entertain the Site Plan Review for this same item? Site Plan PSP 21-0002?
I move that we support, uh, PSP 21-0002.
Support.
Site Plan Review for STL Holdings, yes.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the approval of Site Plan PSP 21-0002. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Haskins?
Yes.
Amanda Baum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have another, uh, rezoning request?
Yeah, Madam President, um, Planner Kyle Bryce is going to be presenting this one as well this evening.
Uh, good evening again, Counsel. Uh, thank you. Uh, so again, this is, uh, PZR 21-0003, that's a rezoning request and Site Plan Review Request, PSP 210004. Uh, this is, uh, brought to you by Petitioner A&amp;S Properties LLC on behalf of the owner, Al Wazir Properties Group. Um, and for just the rezoning portion only, also, uh, Mr. Delorean Huey. Um, so the project area is 12 Mile between Fairfax and Marshall. Um, it's the north side of 12 Mile between those two streets. Uh, the existing zoning onsite is RA Single Family Residential, P, uh, which is vehicular parking, and OS Office Service. Uh, the rezoning request is to rezone, uh, that 1.17 acres of land, uh, to B3 General Business and P Vehicular Parking. Uh, specifically, the B3 portion of the site would be, uh, one acres. Uh, the Site Plan component of this request is to construct a ninety-four-hundred-square-foot Walgreens with a drive-through pharmacy. Uh, if we could go to the next slide, please? Uh, so this is a further back, uh, view of the area. Um, you can barely see Greenfield on the right hand of the screen. So this is only a few blocks away from Greenfield. Uh, and then further west, you can see Southfield. So it is between Southfield and Greenfield, but really close to. Uh, next slide, please. This is a close-up of the site. Uh, this is an older aerial, so that house that's close to 12 Mile, along with that garage on the southeast corner, are no longer there. Uh, note the single-family house in the northwest corner of the site. So that's involved with this project. It would be part of the, um, it's part of the rezoning, and it's, it would be part of the, the future development. Um, next slide, please. So the future land use does show a mix on the site. Uh, the southern half, uh, close to 12 Mile does show local mixed use, uh, with the back half, uh, moderate-density single-family. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so here's a breakdown of the current and proposed zoning. So you can see, uh, the current zoning is on the left. Um, there's OS Office Service along the, uh, 12 Mile frontage. Um, then there's some vehicular parking. Um, if you recall, a few years ago, this was rezoned, uh, the whole, uh, parcel, uh, the whole project area, rather, was single-family, and there's a proposed medical office, but that has not happened. Um, so that OS and P parking was from that. Um, and then you can see that, uh, RA Single Family, uh, yellow zoning in the northwest corner also. Um, so the proposed zoning on the right does show B3, so it'd be one acre of B3, uh, with a, a parking buffer, uh, in the rear of the property. And again, that's to functionally serve as a, a buffer, uh, against the residents, um, so it pushes the development closer to 12 Mile. Uh, next slide, please. Um, so here's a Site Plan. Um, so, Counsel saw this as a study, uh, back in March, and then they saw it, uh, again, as a study, uh, a few weeks ago in April. Um, so you can see, uh, the, the Walgreens situated in the middle of the parcel. Uh, this is a bit of a downsized, it's supposed to be, um, more of a, a neighborhood of Walgreens. Uh, they do have a pedestrian connection to 12 Mile. They will be installing sidewalks on Fairfax and Marshall Streets. Um, they do feature, on the western side of the building, a wooden enclosure for their loading zone and for their trash compactor. Uh, they do not have a dumpster onsite. Um, they do feature, uh, landscape screening, uh, bike racks, two, uh, handicap spaces. And along the northern side of the building, uh, there is a, uh, drive-through, uh, for their pharmacy. Um, if Counsel recalls, the side entrances on Marshall and Fairfax were up at the northern end of the site, um, but they were able to move these down so that they are no longer in front of the residents. Um, this plan is relatively unchanged from when you last saw it. Um, the only issue, or the only change, rather, is on the northwest side. Um, the, the, the next resident, um, was kind of, uh, thinking he wanted to have some kind of residential fencing. He since changed his mind, so now they're proposing a six-foot-high brick masonry wall, uh, that would, uh, effectively screen his property. Um, so there's a detail of that wall, it's going to be, uh, colored to match the building. Uh, next slide. So here's a, just a landscape rendering of the sites. Um, you see that screen wall in the northwest corner. Uh, they are showing the landscape hedge, uh, one area on the western side. Uh, it's just not enough room for a hedge, so they are, uh, electing to do a decorative screen fence, just a thirty-inch, uh, fence, uh, which is, uh, a permissible substitution for that, uh, thirty-inch hedge rule that we have. Um, next slide. Here are the elevations. Um, this is a standard, uh, Walgreens model at the moment, uh, with their colors. They were able to, uh, listen to city requirements for some of our, uh, elevation rules that we have, and they were able to adapt to that. Uh, in particular, uh, if you look at the western exterior elevation, you will see the wooden, uh, enclosures for their trash compactor and their loading area. Uh, next slide, please. Here's a photometric plan of the site. They show those numbers diminishing as it gets to the property lines. Next slide. Um, so at this time, uh, I would like to introduce Paul Weisberger, um, who is representing the team, and also, uh, Jamie Schmidt, who represents, uh, Walgreens, uh, with your permission, Madam President.
Yes, of course.
Good evening, members of City Council. Paul Weisberger on behalf of A&amp;S Properties. Um, we also have Alex Orman on the phone, he's our A&amp;E. Um, and we've got, uh, Julie Kroll.
And we can't hear you, Mr. Weisberger.
Hello?
You're on mute. Yes, now we can hear you.
Okay, I'll speak up.
Thank you.
Um, okay. Again, good evening, um, you've seen this plan. Form. Um, I will just, just very, that we have been sensitive to the needs, uh, of the city, um, and some of the suggestions that have come up. Um, we have also met with our, our neighbors to the north and, um, provided what I believe is a fencing detail that they, um, have approved. Uh, what's unique, and you can see this on the plan, is that we have pushed the screen wall in the northwest portion of the property south, so as to give the neighbor to the north a more open, uh, feeling and some extra green space that didn't currently exist. Um, we have pushed the drive south from the original, um, plan in the attempt to move the traffic, uh, closer to 12 Mile. And as you heard last week from Julie, our traffic expert, uh, there'd be, I believe, only five percent coming out of each driveway, um, the east-west driveways and using those roads. The majority of the traffic would come off a 12 Mile road, and the 12 Mile is suitable to handle traffic. Um, without dragging this on any further, I know you, you have a long evening. Uh, I'd be happy to have any one of our, uh, individuals, uh, answer any questions as they come up. And I would ask respectfully that, uh, we receive a rezoning request and follow the recommendation of staff and the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, this, this is a public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open for PZR 21-0003, the rezoning request.
Hello?
Is there any, hi Pam.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Okay, uh, Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, My telephone number is 2483460439. My only concern, and I really appreciate the comments from Councilman Haskins, Councilwoman Banks, and Council, Councilman Amanda Baum. Uh, there's always an issue when you talk about 12 Mile Road and traffic studies, and those intersections being the most dangerous intersections in the state of Michigan. Right in our small city of Southfield, it's only twenty-six point three or point six square miles. Now, according to SimCOG, which is the Southeastern Michigan Council of, of Government, that intersection is a very dangerous intersection. Do you think that this development is too big for the size of property that it is? And I'm never in favor of a B3 zoning because there's so many different things that you can do in that that is not always a good fit for the neighborhood, for the community, and for the city. So is it possible that they can downscale the size of this development and maybe go to a different zoning as opposed to B3? And I know that, according to our planner tonight, Mr. Spent, that in some of those areas, all of the businesses have already been zoned B3. If that's the case, then that would not be an issue. But I'm just concerned about this type of development at a major intersection and moving into the residential area, because those two streets, Edwardson Fairfax and Marshall, are moving down into the residential area going north off of 12 Mile Road. So, thank you so much, and I'm going to yield, um, the rest of my time and just say I have mixed views about this rezoning. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this, uh, item? Okay, hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. I will, uh, defer to you, Counsel. Uh, again, this is another one that we've, uh, had presented to us a few times already, once in March, once in April. Do you have any questions? Is there anyone on the, right now, tonight, have any additional questions or comments or that they would like to ask?
This is, uh, Councilman Amanda Baum?
Yes, Councilman Amanda Baum.
Um, I just, I just wanted to say, like, when this proposal was first brought to us, I was a little hesitant, being that it is right near and abutting a residential neighborhood. Um, but I was, I'm glad to see that, um, some of the changes that they've made based on our discussion and some of the buffers that they're building, I think will help minimize many of, uh,
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell.
Yes, Councilman Brightwell.
Um, I, I have been supportive of this, and I obviously, uh, felt that they have been very conciliatory. Um, the one I have that, that I have a question about right now, you introduced the idea of a compactor there, and you, do you plan an Alzo operation for that compactor? Specific Alzo operation?
Yeah, I think if Jamie's able to jump in here, uh, you'd be able to field that question. Uh, only after the tr- after the trucks have, uh, delivered. We have two deliveries a week for the trucks, and, um, so you could expect the compactor to be used after they are unloaded and all the merchandise is put on the shelves.
Okay, um, obviously, this pops out with respect to noise, uh, for the residents there. Now, I'm not, I'm not into waste management, but I think a compactor will be, you crush the boxes, the things that are delivered in. And, uh, just listening to my recycle truck, when he's compacting the recycle, I put in there, it makes noise. So, uh, I did not get a good answer, uh, if there would ever be a set to, so when that compactor will be operated, be operated if needed, whenever it's needed.
So, uh, if I'm understanding the question, the compactor is actually quieter than a truck? And then, um, what it does operate is, it's a electric compression instead of a diesel, which is what you see in a truck. A truck that does pick it up is a, a, a fatbed truck that picks up the compacted boxes.
Okay, well, you know, if you're telling me that this will be relatively quiet, and I don't know anything about compacting or trucks of diesels, but I just know anything that's crushing something, it will make noise. So, tell me that this will be a relatively quiet noise, it'll be a relative quiet crushing process.
I can honestly say I haven't stood next to it and listened to one.
Okay, well, um, wait, well, let me get it, I, I can see where this might just create an issue for a resident, might be fairly close, if they have them every day at nine A M, three, seven P M, have to get a routine of, uh, something being crushed. Would you be amenable to actually scheduling your crushing to when it's, uh, suitable, you know, for, for the, for the neighborhood?
Jamie, I think the, the question is whether or not Walgreens would be acceptable to having a condition as to when, uh, compacting could occur to be sensitive to the neighbor's needs.
Absolutely. The, um, we've, we've limited our delivery to twice a week, uh, specifically for that reason, because, you know, large trucks and noise. Um, and we cannot make sure to operate the compactor during times when it's not going to be noticed, you know, nighttime, that kind of stuff.
Okay, all right. We, I will hold to that in the event it, um, it comes, becomes an issue for the residents. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else on council have a question or a comment? Okay, hearing none, um, I, I will entertain a motion.
This is Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
I moved, we, I moved it to P Z R two-one-dash-zero-zero-three, rezoning request of A and S Properties LLC.
Support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve P Z R two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-three, the rezoning request of the A S Properties LLC on behalf of the owners of Alwazai Properties Group LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
No.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to move introduction of ordinance number thirteen thirty-seven.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the introduction of ordinance number one seven three seven. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks.
No.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Um, could we also entertain a motion for P S P two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-four, the site plan, unless we need to open it up for discussion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the, uh, approval of P S P two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-four, site plan review request of A S Properties LLC. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Jeff, the last, uh, item here for public hearing?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so the last item for planning and the last public hearing this evening, uh, is P Z T A twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-two. Uh, this is a text amendment, uh, to amend the zoning ordinance, uh, by amending Article Four, Section five point two-two-dash-three, overlay development district table one, permitted table of uses. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please. Um, basically, what this amendment does is it, it corrects a clerical error, uh, with regard to where medical marijuana facilities are permitted, uh, from an O D, O D D overlay development district, district, um, issue, if you can go to the next slide. Um, so the intent of, of this amendment is to change table two, uh, which is shown there, it'd be on the left-hand, or the right-hand side, uh, of the screen. Um, basically, these are all the overlay development districts that are within the city, uh, are within the Northland District, uh, the Central Park District, shopping, lifestyle, innovation, uh, open space, and Boundary District. And you can see, uh, at the very bottom, it notes medical marijuana, and then the P meeting where, where it's be, where it is permitted, uh, again, within the overlay development district for Northland, uh, if you can go to the next slide. So what happened was, um, when the, when the text got published, um, it noted, as you can see on the, on the left-hand side, that medical marijuana facilities are shown permitted in Southfield Tech District, City Center, Downtown Development District, Smart Zone, and not in the overlay development districts. That was not the intent of the ordinance, and actually, what was online and printed is the proper version, um, that mer- medical marijuana facilities, uh, are only allowed within the P, um, or within the, the downtown development district, and again, only in Northland, not in any other o- o- overlay development district area within the city. So it was just a clerical error that was made, but we wanted to be, uh, transparent here and make sure that we went through the process to get that amended, uh, so that it was properly, uh, published. And again, what you see on the right-hand side is, is, uh, the way that it should have been, uh, but it was improperly done. So we wanted to make sure, again, that, that we did this properly, brought it back to the council, and amended, uh, the zoning ordinance to what it shows here on the right-hand side. And, and that's basically, it was just, it was a simple clerical error, uh, that happened when it came between the publishing and then the printing.
Thank you. Um, this is gonna, uh, a public hearing, so I will now declare the public hearing for P Z T A two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-two open. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this item, um, the public hearing is now open.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, uh, Madam President, I was going to speak, but I decided to, uh, change my mind, and thank you for the opportunity. I'll keep listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Um, council, again, this has been presented to us several times. Is there anyone that has a question or a concern, or would like to make a comment towards this topic?
Madam President, I just, I just wanted to be clear on what, uh, Mr. Spence, uh, just again said to us. I know we have talked about this, but, uh, in terms of Northland, uh, the property, uh, there will be, um, opportunities for medical marijuana or recreational on that site, if that's, if that is someone that comes that wants to develop, or no?
No, it, this would allow it. And again, council has already approved it once, and again, the, the clerical happened, uh, in the published versus, uh, the online and printed version. Um, so yes, council did originally approve medical marijuana facilities, um, on, in the Northland O D D sub, sub-area, uh, sub-area. So yes, you would just be continuing to, to allow medical marijuana, not recreational. Um, the city council has not, uh, approved recreational marijuana within the city. Um, you decided against that, so it would only be medical marijuana facilities only could go within the downtown development district area, Northland Subarea.
Jeff, do you know, uh, by, offhand, uh, if, if we, you know, as we develop that, uh, parcel or that piece of land, how many medical, uh, facilities could actually go onto Northland with that hundred twenty-four or so acres?
Did, uh, dur- an exact number, it, some of it, it depends on the type of facility, uh, whether it's a grow or a processor versus a, a provisioning center. They have different requirements for, um, dimensional requirements and how close they can be to each other. Uh, Mr. Cruz, um, I really, offhand, I don't have an exact number for you, um, but you would have to figure you could have at least one grow, one processor, and one provisioning center.
Okay, that's fair, fair enough. We can talk more about it later. I just was asking the question tonight, but no, that's fine. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that have any questions regarding this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
P Z T A twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-two?
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, for the approval of P Z T A two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-two, the council-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Port.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, council, at this time, I will ask that we take a ten-minute recess before we start our next, um, agenda items. So we will take a ten-minute recess. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Our first item we have is the, um, Southfield Police Department Block Safety Automatic License Plate Recognition.
Good evening, uh, Madam President and elected officials and members of the community.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me, chief, before you start, could I please, I just want to remind everybody that if you're not speaking, to mute your line, and if you raise your hand if you need to speak, please do star three. So, again, I'm sorry, chief, please forgive me for interrupting.
Oh, yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, but again, uh, starting off, just thanking, uh, the elected officials, the community for being present. Uh, with me in my room, uh, is Lieutenant Matthew Taylor, Sergeant Blake Matatol, and Detective Kevin Snook as part of my team, uh, as we move forward with these items. So the Southfield Police Department has a, a really good opportunity, uh, to enhance our technology, uh, so we're seeking authorization to conduct a free sixty-day trial for five block safety license plate readers. These license plate readers, uh, could be placed throughout the city in strategic locations. Uh, they will go up on poles, uh, for fixed surveillance, um, and the readers can capture vehicles traveling up to one hundred miles per hour, uh, and that will be ninety feet away, uh, that will be day or night. These late, these readers also can capture, uh, two lanes of traffic and provide information pertaining to a vehicle make and model. Just to give you a quick example, uh, many of you remember the, uh, tragic situation where a three-year-old child, uh, was shot and killed, uh, as a, as a victim in a road race situation, uh, in the city of Detroit on a Southfield freeway. Well, it was these license plate readers that helped to identify and apprehend, uh, that person responsible for that crime. Uh, the data that's collected is stored in a cloud using an encryption system, uh, that both the federal government and the National Security Agency also use. Uh, this system delivers real-time notifications directly to the police officers, uh, in-car computers, or their mobile devices. And, and another example, uh, to share with you, let's say, for example, we are looking for a particular wanted vehicle, wanted suspect, we can enter the information in the system, and if that vehicle crosses a threshold of one of our strategically-placed cameras, we will get that alert and that immediate notification as to where they're going. Uh, as it relates to investigative purposes, again, let's say we're looking for a particular suspect, one for a crime committed in our city, we can enter that vehicle into the system. When that vehicle crosses, again, one of our cameras, uh, this police department will be provided with a image of the vehicle, the date and time, uh, of travel. So again, a good investigative tool, uh, the city of Detroit currently has these devices, and they're also increasing the number of devices that they, uh, currently have. Dearborn Police Department is, uh, is on board with this and other surrounding agencies. The, the reason I mention that to you is because this provides inter-agency, uh, shared, uh, technology, so that if a crime is committed here, uh, they can access our feeds, a crime committed in one of those cities, we can access, again, vehicles that we're looking for. What we're looking to do in this trial basis is to see if this technology is something that we can benefit from as a department and as a city. So let's say, after the sixty-day trial period concludes, we're happy with what we, uh, have learned from the system. At that point, we'll come back before council, and we'll ask you, uh, either to let us maintain the five camera- and they're also increasing the number of devices that they, uh, currently have. Dearborn Police Department is, uh, is on board with this and other surrounding agencies. The, the reason I mention that to you is because this provides inter-agency, uh, shared, uh, technology. So that if a crime is committed here, uh, they can access our feeds, a crime committed in one of those cities, we can access, again, vehicles that we're looking for. What we're looking to do in this trial basis is to see if this technology is something that we can benefit from as a department and as a city. So let's say after the sixty-day trial period concludes, we're happy with what we, uh, have learned from the system. At that point, we'll come back before council and we'll ask you, uh, either to let us maintain the five cameras or we may ask you to increase the number of cameras, uh, based on our analysis. The cost per unit is two thousand five hundred annual per unit, uh, with an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for installation. Uh, these devices, uh, come in either solar panel, uh, or we can do hardware, uh, standard hardware. Uh, we're gonna go for the solar to see how that works, uh, first for obvious reasons, save on, on energy. We, and with that being said, I do want to close by saying, uh, two things. If approved, we're gonna get the city planner involved to ensure the city planner, uh, knows, uh, where the locations, uh, that we plan on having these installed to make sure they're according to, uh, city's policies, not, uh, anything that we made at them. And then secondly, we're going to, I want to make a declaration to this, to this, uh, panel and to the community, that this technology is not, I'm gonna repeat, is not, uh, facial recognition. It is clearly for identifying vehicles through license plate readers. I know that's a, a sensitive subject with facial recognition, but I want to make sure it's very clear, this is not facial recognition. And so with that, I do, uh, close my comments, uh, and do request that the city, uh, approve the sixty-day cost-free trial.
Thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I will open this up to council now. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Um, I have no questions. It looks like it's a great program and, um, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes, I think that's an excellent too. Uh, Chief, just, um, did you say it would act? Need the license plate? Yeah, I think I heard you're a little, little choppy, but I think you asked, uh, whether this will read the license plates and that is correct, uh, the license plate only, and then the system would, would trigger, uh, our needs. Okay, the next question is, obviously, this will come up after your trial. Uh, and, you know, if, if you wanted to body, what's, what's the life of one of these units? Uh, I don't have an answer to that at this time, but as you said, when we come back before you, uh, we'll have that, that answer for you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Nope, everything sounds good. Thank you, Chief, for always being proactive. So, uh, carry on.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'm fine with that. I'm certainly fine with doing the trial. Um, and Chief, you, uh, been doing a great job with making a, a number of reforms in our, uh, in our department. Um, and one of my concerns is, I just want to make sure, um, that we're not introducing people, that, the, the wrong people, uh, to our criminal justice system. Uh, and I'm wondering if you know, uh, since this has been in, in Detroit and Dearborn, I'm wondering if you know of any issues that they've had as far as accidentally, you know, if they're reading the license plate, if it's made a mistake and picked the wrong person? Um, any issues with, uh, I mean, my biggest concern is that we actually, we get the wrong person and there's a bigger issue with them being stopped by the police.
Great question. Uh, this system is designed to where it can distinguish between, uh, states. So let's say, for example, there's a, a plate out of Ohio, for example, that's similar to a Michigan plate. It will make the distinction between the two, uh, states. Uh, in addition to that, this is an investigative tool. And so even though we have information on a, a possible suspect, there'll be layers of investigation, uh, before we act on any type of arrest to make sure that we have, uh, the person that we're looking for. Because as you know, uh, the importance of that is anybody can drive a vehicle, but it'd be the investigative process will determine who is, uh, one that we should arrest. And I will assure you that this, uh, police department, uh, will do thorough investigations, uh, prior to any arrests of any suspects. But I have not heard of any license plate reader, uh, uh, issues as relates to, uh, the system, uh, arresting the wrong person. The only thing I have heard of, and that's why it's very clear, on facial recognition, uh, that's the only thing I've heard that had that type of outcome.
All right, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mandelbaum?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, Chief, I, I know we talked about this, uh, earlier, uh, last week, uh, in council presence, that the money for this, if we go forward, is gonna come out of the drug forfeiture fund. Is that still correct?
Yes, sir. Uh, with council's approval, uh, once we get to that point on acquiring these, uh, technologies, we will be asking for the money to come out of our, uh, drug forfeiture account. Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the, the other question I had is, and, and maybe I missed this, we, if we are looking for a specific license plate or car model, we, and you entered into the system and the system will pick up, you know, whatever it finds on the camera. Does it automatically store data though, as well? So you can say, hey, yesterday we were looking for this car, let's access the system and it will look, you know, point out any make or model of a specific car? It doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to be real-time?
Uh, again, again, another great question. Uh, so the system does store, uh, for thirty days, it will store, uh, all images that crosses its path. And so to your point, uh, incident happens two days prior, uh, and we just now getting the, you know, say a witness statement that gives us a, a license plate. Uh, we, we, we have to push that into the system and it will give us the image, date and time stamp of when that vehicle crossed that threshold of one of our model cameras.
Great, okay. Thank you. Um, you know, I hope that, as you mentioned, this will be an, uh, an additional investigative tool, uh, to use. I have, uh, uh, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, uh, that's on the call for this item? Okay, hearing none. Council, uh, would you care to entertain a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to move that we, um, approve the, uh, Southfield Police Department's request for the Flock Safety Automatic License Plate Recognition Trial.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Brightwell for the approval of the, uh, temporary, um, use of the South, for the Southfield Police of the Flock Safety Automatic License Plate Recognition, uh, uh, application. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz? Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next item is the receipt of proposals for vehicle towing and storage, uh, services?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, Chief Baron, uh, backup, again, with me, uh, in the room, Lieutenant Matthew Taylor, Sergeant Blake Matatol, uh, and Detective Kevin Snook. Uh, on March eighteenth of this year, the personal consent department, uh, received bids to establish the contract pricing for vehicle, uh, towing and vehicle towing services. Uh, as a reminder, uh, the successful, uh, company is required to maintain a facility within the city of Southfield limits with zoning appropriate for storage space and security within city limits. Fifteen companies, uh, did download this request for bid, uh, of which two companies responded. Uh, Larry Ross Garage Incorporated, also known as Ross Towing, and the second company was, uh, Quality Towing Services, uh, and both these companies are, uh, located in the city of Southfield. The services that they're required to provide, uh, to the city in this community, uh, is removal of abandoned and accident damaged vehicles from city streets, cleaning accident debris from the roadways and storing vehicles at a secure facility until either released from the police department, obtained by the owner or sold at a city auction. And just to further discussion on the, the sites, uh, the city planner and his team, uh, did go out, uh, to ensure that both these locations, uh, are adequate locations for our use. As you already know, uh, Ross is the current, uh, user that we have, uh, and then they went out to look at Quality, uh, to make sure that their facility was adequate as well, and it was. As a result of the bidding process, uh, Quality, uh, did come in much lower, uh, than the existing company of Ross. Therefore, our recommendation, uh, to the council is that we move forward with, uh, quality towing services, uh, for a period of, uh, April, uh, twenty-seven of this year, uh, through April twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-three, uh, so a two-year, uh, contract, uh, with, uh, one-year extensions, uh, attached to that, to that requirement. From there, uh, over to the floor for questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, council, uh, I'll open it up to you and I'll start with you, Councilman Brightwell.
Yeah, Chief, I think you answered the first question with, who's the current vendor? And you said Ross. Um, and I've seen Ross, since I've been in Southfield. What, how long has this Quality been in business? At least twenty-five, at least twenty-five years service in the city of Southfield. What I mean by that, uh, Ross has pretty much, uh, maintained the contract, uh, for a number of years. Quality has been our secondary towing service in the event, uh, Ross has not been available. And so they've been here for a number of years, uh, to answer your question, at least twenty-five. Okay. I saw the, the numbers, so I didn't, for that, uh, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Cruz?
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you.
Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me on this. Thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
Um, I guess my question is, how are, how is Quality Towing, when I'm looking at the fees? How, how are they so much cheaper than Ross Towing? You know, for, for a lot of things that they're, they're not even charging for different fees for, I'm just wondering how that, they're, they're able to do that.
Right. And so, uh, the only way I can answer that is, is hopefully they, uh, look at, um, their company and ensure that when they gave us these prices, uh, they, uh, are able to meet the needs of their company. Um, it's up to them whether they choose to charge us or not, or whether they choose to give us a reduced rate. Uh, but again, uh, as you see in the, in the document, they chose to either give us some free services, uh, and/or reduced services. But, uh, I can't answer as to why, uh, only that they understood the bidding process and they documented with, uh, how they will move forward in the competition.
All right, and will we have Ross Towing as a backup? Will they just switch positions then, or?
Yes, so they, uh, so once council make a decision on, uh, which company to go with, uh, the idea would be that Ross will be secondary and Quality will be primary.
Okay. Um, my last question is, I said, you know, when you, when you drive around town and see all these signs, you know, that, um, you know, parking lots, you know, washed by Ross Towing and different things like that, are those all private contracts? Or, um, is that also part of the city? And if it's part of the city, will that have to be, all those signs have to be replaced?
Yeah, so those are all private contracts. Uh, so, uh, it'll be maintained by that particular entity.
Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, then, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Um, Chief, do you know how much property Quality, um, Towing has to store vehicles? I know Ross has a lot of property.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that. Um, only, only then we did as a, a police department and as a city was to ensure that the properties here in Southfield, that they can meet our demands. And they did meet our demands as our capacity and our expectations, uh, for their lot size. But as far as their overall, uh, company, uh, locations, I'm unaware.
So, um, let me rephrase it a little differently. Um, so if, example, we, they pick up twenty-five cars a day from the city of Southfield, do they have ample space to store the twenty-five cars per day on their property? Was that looked at?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that is something that, uh, was looked at. In addition to that, uh, the city planner, his team went out and conducted an inspection to ensure that they can meet our, our needs and that was verified and then approved to move forward, uh, to council for final approval.
Okay. And then, um, I thought last time the towing contract was approved, you know, there was a lot of discussion and controversy that it was awarded to two companies and the two companies were listed in the resolution.
Well, the history of that, may, maybe get the city clerk or someone else for that history. I'm not, uh, updated on that kind of history.
Because I, I pers, I personally would like to see if Ross is gonna be a secondary. Um, I'd like them to be listed as a secondary company in this resolution. And I believe that's how it was done, um, last time. I think Ross was first and I can't, I don't know if it was Quality, but there was another company that was a secondary, I thought.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that, uh, many years ago, there was, uh, uh, there was a bidding war and ended up that the, the previous, uh, two chiefs ago, uh, decided to split the city up at that point. And one section of the city was gonna be with one towing service with Quality and the other one was gonna be with Ross. I think that's where both companies were listed in the resolution.
And if I may add, uh, if I may add, once the council decides on, uh, which way to go, whether it's gonna be Quality or Ross, at that point, uh, a notification would have to be made to advise both of them who, uh, was granted the, the bid or the contract. And then, uh, we'll have to see if Ross will still maintain services here. Uh, and if so, uh, we'll, they'll be secondary or they choose to move on, uh, we have to find another option. But, uh, but I think that's something that would may have to take place, uh, afterwards.
Okay, but in your letter, you said there were only two companies that, um, met the, the criteria of the builds that were in the city of Southfield, correct?
Correct, correct. And, and, and as stated.
So there would not be another company. It would have to be Ross if we don't have any other companies.
Right, we would have to, again, reach out to them, make sure that they are in agreeance. And the only reason I'm saying it like this, I'm trying to be careful what I'm saying, um, 'cause I know sometimes when, when, when bids don't go, uh, away of certain companies, they may elect, um, to do something different. Again, I don't know if that's the case for Ross, but we will have to make sure that they're still on board with being secondary, uh, once we notify them that they did not get this particular, uh, bid, if that's council's decision. And if they, and if they elect not to be secondary, then we will have to go and do some more homework, uh, legwork to find a secondary company.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, Chief, just, the, um, Quality came in at a lower, uh, bid. It was, how much was the difference? It can, can we ask that?
Well.
If it's not proper, then, if it's not proper, don't answer it, it's okay.
Right, I, yeah, I think, I don't think it's proper for this call.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, not a problem. Not a problem. I was just curious.
Madam President, just for, uh, clarification of the record.
Madam President, just for clarification of the record, on May eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty, the council did authorize a one-year contract extension. Um, and Larry Ross Garage actually does business as Ross Towing. And that was the way that the resolution was written. So it was not a secondary individual that was, uh, provided in the extension. It was just the fact that Larry Ross Garage, uh, does business as Ross Towing. And that was, uh, the last two, uh, extensions were written in that capacity. And that resolution was adopted by council on, uh, May eleventh, two thousand twenty for the extension.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, does anyone else have any other questions for this item? If not, council, would you like to entertain a motion?
Ma'am Chair, Councilman Brightwell, I make a motion that we approve, um, the awarding of the contract to the quality towing and storage as presented to us.
Is there a second?
I support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz to provide in storage services as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
And Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Our next item is the authorization to purchase human resources information software for the Human Resources Department.
Good evening, council. Maria Calhoun, Deputy Human Resources Director. And tonight I come before you to ask for the Human Resources Department to purchase or approve the purchase of NeoGov, which is an HR workforce management platform designed specifically with public sector focus. The company reports that more than six thousand public sector and education organizations use the product to recruit, select, and evaluate their workforces. NeoGov will allow our team and other departments to perform HR operations on a digital platform and can successfully integrate with other programs such as BSA. We are requesting to purchase four modules at this time. The Insight License, which encompasses recruitment and applicant, applicant tracking. The Government Jobs License, which is ranked as the highest job board for applicants searching for public sector roles. The Onboard License, which can drastically reduce pay performance for new hires and other employees through the use of an employee, employee portal. The program is designed to perform preboarding and offboarding operations as well. Lastly, we're asking to purchase the Perform License, which automates employee evaluation and can track employee performance as well as provide feedback. The tool can be used to identify skill gaps and areas of improvement. And I'm not sure if Financial Direct, Finance Director Michaels is on, because he can certainly articulate the, um, financial components far better than I can. Is Mr. Michaels here?
He is not on the call this evening.
Okay, so I'm going to go through. I'll give them my best shot. Um, the total cost for installation for this budget year is sixty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents and will be paid from capital improvement funds. The perpetual cost is forty, forty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents and will be costed across all user platforms. So, um, essentially, all users will share in the cost of it. Although it is, uh, by and large, an HR function, it is used for HR functions throughout the organization. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, I'll open it up to council. Thank you, Maria, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, council, uh, I'll open it up to you for any questions that you might have. And I'll start with you, Councilman Cruz.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Calhoun, for your presentation. And, um, I don't have any questions. I think it was very clear and concise. So, um, I'll, we can carry on.
Yep. Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no, no questions for me on this. All right, thank you.
Councilman Mandelbaum?
No, I, I don't have any questions. I think this is definitely, uh, very overdue uh, for the city. And I'm glad that we're finally moving forward to especially get uh, faster recruiting tools as well as, uh, performance evaluation. So, thank you, uh, Deputy, uh, HR Director. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Banks?
We have no questions. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Thank you. All right. Uh, council, would you like to make a motion?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I'd like to make, uh, I'd like to move the authorization to purchase human resources information software for HR Department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz for the approval of the authorization to purchase the, uh, human resource information software. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Cruz?
Support.
Yes or no?
All right, yes.
Banks? Us. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the proposed sale of real property.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening. This is a vacant lot the city has owned for almost ten years without any offers. One of our residents would like to buy the home or the lot, build a home on it, and understands the eighteen-month requirement for completing the building, has agreed to it. The assessor has priced the lot at seven thousand five hundred dollars, taking the agreement to build a home into consideration. And we are recommending sale of the lot for seven thousand five hundred dollars with the agreement that the home must be built within eighteen months. And I know the resident is eager to start construction. So if council would be willing to vote on that tonight, this would be great.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions on this? Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, Madam President, I believe, uh, Mr. McCraney, we do have the, the buyer, potential buyer on the line?
She is on the line if there are questions, yes.
Uh, Madam President, did you want me to unmute the, the potential buyer?
Uh, yes, just in case they may want to make a comment.
Okay, I think they're un, unmuted right now.
Okay. Uh, sir or madam, would you care to make a comment?
They're unmuted. Caller starting at number two four eight eight zero eight. You're unmuted.
Yeah, I am, uh, not for this particular item.
Okay. Okay.
They must not be online anymore. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, council, um, does anyone have any questions or anything for this particular item, proposed sale of real property?
Yes. Councilwoman Banks, do we know what type of home is, um, being proposed to be built on this property?
Through the chair. I don't believe the home has been identified as of yet. I know the home is for, I believe, the president's daughter and son-in-law to live in, but I don't think they've gotten that far on the planning yet.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Uh, council, I will entertain a motion.
Then I move the, uh, proposed sale of real property as presented this evening.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, for the approval of the proposed sale of real property as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Banks? Banks, second. Yes. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Our next item is, is the approval to purchase the Microsoft three sixty-five for the Southfield Public Library.
Yes. Good evening, Madam President and distinguished council. This is Mary Beal, the interim city librarian. And thank you for your time and consideration tonight. Our coordinator of library technology, Ken Landa, will be presenting items E and F for the library. And I think he has requested to be unmuted to speak to us tonight.
Mr. Landa is on, he's unmuted.
Mr. Landa?
I don't know if he lost connections, but I see his name right here. He's not on mute, so.
Okay, well, I will get started for Ken. Um, the library is asking for council approval to purchase services from Planet Technologies using GSA Cooperative government contract pricing. The contract will cover conversion of data, configuration, and implementation of the Microsoft Office three sixty-five and Exchange email system, which will include staff and technical training and education. This is a replacement for the Novell Groupwise legacy system. Our legacy system, hardware, and application software are all beyond end of life and are no longer eligible for vendor support. Replacing the current system will provide expanded capabilities, including web and mobile access, a stable backup environment, and a modern and supportive system. Having MS three sixty-five also provides better opportunity for visibility and interaction between the city's IT and library systems, such as shared contacts, email groups, forums, and conferencing. Although the city and library will be using the same basic email platform, there is an advantage to keeping them separate. The library is considered an academic institution by software and hardware vendors and is eligible to purchase academic educational licenses and subscriptions. If it were not, then government or business-level pricing would apply, and educational academic licenses and government licenses cannot be combined on the same system installation. What this means for us is a cost savings. For example, the library pays two dollars and fifty cents per month, or thirty dollars a year for MS three sixty-five. For our one hundred and twenty-five licenses, the annual cost is three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For the same license bought under government licensing, the cost to the city is seventeen dollars seventy-eight a month, or two hundred, uh, thirty-six per year. For the same one hundred and twenty-five licenses, the cost is twenty-six thousand six seventy. This results in an annual savings for us of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. The cost of implementing this system is thirty-three thousand one thirty. This is a one-time cost. In year one, we see a savings of ten thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Year three accrued savings of thirty-five thousand six thirty. Year five accrued savings, eighty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for the library. But more importantly, these are actual ongoing savings for the residents of Southfield. We additionally ask approval for a budget adjustment, increasing the library's computer services account by eighteen thousand one thirty, with a corresponding increase in the use of fund balance. Thank you.
Thank you. A great presentation, Ms. Beal. Uh, council, uh, I will entertain questions. Um, and we'll start with you, um, Councilman Mandelbaum.
And if I may interject, um, uh, Madam Clerk, Kenny is calling in on two four eight eight oh eight.
Hello, can I be heard?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I am available now to answer any questions.
Okay, we were just getting to the council portion. So if council has any questions, we'll ask you at that time. So, um, Councilman Mandelbaum?
Nope, I, I have no questions. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Uh, Councilwoman Banks?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Councilman Cruz?
Uh, thank you, Mary, for the presentation. Uh, that was new information for me to understand that the city actually has the same privileges as, uh, educational institutions. And so, uh, I think that's awesome. And, uh, I have no question whatsoever. I just want to thank you for that information.
Thank you. And Councilman Hoskins?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, hearing no questions then, uh, council, I'd like to entertain a motion for items E and F, the approval of the purchase of the software, the Microsoft three sixty-five, as well as the budget adjustment.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to make a, a move that we have the approval to purchase Microsoft six, three sixty-five as well as a budget adjustment for the Southfield Public Library.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the purchase of Microsoft three sixty-five and to authorize the budget adjustment. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And Banks?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Oh, thank you, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. The next item is the revocation of the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate two thousand sixteen dash oh two oh four, um, the Luke Providence Tower located at sixteen three hundred West Nine Mile Road. Uh, and we could probably do these two items together as well. Do you think we should do them together?
Madam Chair, uh, Mike Rakhov to the assessor.
Yes. Yes.
So we could, we could do seven and eight together. Yes, these are, uh, the same, same situation with both properties.
Yes.
This is, uh, uh, the Two Towers, uh, sixteen three hundred North Park Place and sixteen four hundred North Park Place, uh, owned by Amvent Capital Group, LLC. I received a letter from the owner, Mike Taleb, uh, indicating that he would like to revoke his Public Act two ten that your honorable body granted back in two thousand nineteen. He was, uh, very excited and ambition at the time to, uh, begin major capital improvements to these two properties. The, uh, main capital improvement had to do with replacing all the water lines and all the plumbing fixtures within the two buildings. Um, the age of the building, uh, galvanized piping begins to close up, uh, with calcium buildup, uh, kind of almost like rusting from the inside, uh, shutting down the water to all the units. Uh, I'm sure many of you, uh, on council have received calls from tenants, uh, complaining about the water and the hot water and lack thereof. Um, so he moved, uh, rapidly with this, these improvements. Uh, these are two fourteen-story buildings, a hundred and thirty-five units in each building. Uh, they're planted as condos, but they are rented as apartments, except for sixteen four hundred, which has, uh, eighty-nine apartment- which has 89 apartments and 46 condos. And although the condos are not part of the 210, they are receiving much of the same benefit because their water lines need to be replaced as well. As he was moving through with this capital improvements, the pandemic struck and the fact that he cannot, there's a moratorium on evictions. About 30% of his tenants stopped paying rent, knowing that they cannot be evicted and they can live there for a year or more absolutely free. So his cash flow has diminished substantially. And his expenses have gone up because not only have the rents been halted, so has paying the water and the electric bill. So he is requested to abolish the Public Act 210 on these buildings. However, he would like to continue with his improvements moving forward. But at the same time as the pandemic, he's now suffering issues with his elevators. One elevator in each building has been shut down. They need to be replaced. The other two are being nursed along. And this is an additional $2 million worth of capital improvements that was not planned for in his original Public Act 210. So with the 210, the value as the improvements are put in place are added back on. And he's in a position where the value is not increasing. It's actually decreasing. And with the 210, he can't come to the assessor or the MTT or whatever and address these issues from that perspective. So he's looking at abolishing the Public Act 210. It would be effective for the 2022 year, since we're already in the end of April 2001. So it would give him hopefully a benefit come 2022 at this point. So before you today is his request to abolish the Public Act 210, but to continue with the improvements.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to counsel if you have any questions regarding either one of the revocations. And I'll start with you, Councilwoman Banks.
Thank you. I have no questions. I just want to make sure that counsel did receive the correct letter for item G. I believe there was a new letter. And would also like to request that the supporting material be corrected for our minutes on demand with the correct letter that Assessor Radcliffe has provided to us.
Madam President, to Councilwoman Banks, that has already happened.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Brightwell?
No questions.
Councilman Cruz?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
And Councilman Mandelbaum?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no questions, then, counsel, I would like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, this is Administrator Zorn. I would like you to adopt both resolutions separately as they state individual addresses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to move the revocation of the Commercial Rehab Exemption Certificate for Loop Providence Tower at 16300 West Nine Mile Road.
Support.
Madam President, actually, that is not Loop Providence. That's the error. They're both Amvent Capital, 16300 and 16400.
All right, well, I will amend the motion to move the revocation of the PA 210 for Amvent, 16300 West Nine Mile Road.
And again, I will support that, Councilman Cruz.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, for the approval of the revocation of the Commercial Rehabilitation Exemption Certificate number 2016-020 for Amvent Capital Group for 16300 West Nine Mile Road. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thanks. Yes. Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
And Cruz?
Yes. This is Councilman Mandelbaum again. I would like to move the revocation of PA 210 for Amvent Capital located at 16400 North Park Drive.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the revocation of the Commercial Rehab Exempt Certificate 2019-017 for Amvent Capital Group located at 16400 North Park Drive. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Brightwell? I'm sorry, Banks?
Banks, yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next item is the authorization for proof for the additional repairs of the Mary Thompson House.
Yes, Madam President. This is Administrator Zorn. In October of 2020, council authorized the installation, the removal and installation of Harding Plank prefinished lap siding for a total of $38,482.50. Upon further inspection of the building, there's been substantial deterioration along the west elevation front porch. And upon consultation with the Historical Commission, there has been a desire to redeck that front porch as well as restore the original front porch roof for an additional cost of $6,967.57. This evening, we're asking that council approve the expanded project scope to include the completion of the deteriorated west elevation front porch deck in conjunction with the front porch roof for an additional amount of $6,967.50 for a new total project cost of $45,450. Funds are available in the Mary Thompson Trust account.
Thank you, Administrator Zorn. Counsel, does anyone have any questions for Administrator Zorn regarding this item? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, I would like to entertain a motion.
This is Councilman Mandelbaum.
Yes.
I'd like to move the authorization for additional repairs to the Mary Thompson House.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Cruz, to approve the authorization for the additional repairs of the Mary Thompson House. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
And Brightwell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, counsel, I've added the council vacancy position. I'd like for us to take a few minutes to discuss that. As you all know, and we've received letters to the effect that our councilwoman, Tanya Morris, resigned as of April 20th. So she's no longer a council member. And to fill her vacancy, I asked the Legislative Committee to take on the task of letting us know what our options would be to fill that vacancy. The legislative team, along with our city attorney office, reviewed our options and came back with us with two options. And you received a letter to that effect this week. There were two options. The council could appoint someone to complete the vacancy or we could have a special election. If we chose the special election, petitions could be gathered up to July 20th of this year with a primary in November of this year. And the general election or special general election would be held May of '22, leaving the seat vacant for almost a year. So that's not the option that I would recommend. I would recommend that the council would look at the appointment process. And what we've used in the past is always been up to the council to use your own discretion as to how you want to fill that position, that appointed position. I think, given the circumstances and all the things that we're going through currently, knowing that we do not want the seat to be vacant for a year, that we should choose someone that's familiar with what and how the city currently runs. Who comes to my mind is a person that was formerly on council. Formerly the council president, has been council pro temp, has been chair of several different council committees. I personally think this person would be a great fit, could step right into the role as he has done in the past. I would like to recommend that we would appoint Myron Fraser to complete the term of vacancy. But this is all open for discussion. I wanted to present this to you, and now I will ask the council if you have any questions or concerns or any further comments, please do so now.
Madam President, if I could, Councilman Cruz?
Yes.
I will be totally in favor of former Councilman Fraser joining our group once again. I think what you said is totally on point that we don't want to rock the boat a whole lot right here. We have a lot of critical things that we need to take care of. Mr. Fraser is a very seasoned individual as it relates to Southfield politics. And I think we'd be well-served by having him back on our team. So if we can, I would like to see him named back to the group this evening. We don't need to go any further with six individuals. I think we need to fill this immediately. And I think he's the perfect person for the job.
Thank you. Counsel, is there anyone else? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Myron Fraser to fill the vacancy on council left by Councilwoman Tanya Morris.
I would make that motion to appoint Myron, if we don't need a Rule 10, which I don't believe we do this evening, to replace Tanya Morris. And go ahead, we'll go from there.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to appoint Myron Fraser to fill the term of Tanya Morris. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
And Hoskins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I do just want to recognize Councilwoman Morris for her years of service on the council and thank her for everything that she has done too. She was a great asset to our council, to the city, and we wish her well and on her future endeavors.
Thank you. Yes, I concur. I agree with what you're saying. Thank you. Next, we have communications. And the city of Southfield, the city council has established the following rules of procedures for all speakers, where we read Rule 7 of Rules of Procedure for the city of Southfield. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use threatening or abusing language when addressing the city council. And any person who violates this section, their microphone will be muted since we're in a virtual meeting. And with that, I'd like to open up communications for anyone that's on the line.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi Pam. Hello?
Hi.
Hi.
I believe that's Tanya Morris on the line.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Good evening. I'm sorry.
Oh, hi, hi. Good evening. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd just like to publicly state to this honorable body, as well as the citizens of Southfield and our listening audience, that I have decided to run for the office of mayor. And as you stated earlier, I had to resign my position as councilwoman. I submitted my nominating positions to the clerk, and they have been certified. My resignation was effective Tuesday, April 20th, 2021. And I just want to state to the council, it's truly been my pleasure, privilege, and honor to serve with you, the residents of Southfield, as your councilwoman. I appreciate the working as well as personal relationships that I've developed through the years with my fellow council members, city administration, and our business and residential community. I've learned a lot. I've done a lot. And now I look forward to elevating my level of service to the city of Southfield as your next mayor. And I want to thank everyone on this call for your support, your guidance, and your partnership. Peace and blessings to you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Ridiculous to be campaigning at the diet during a council meeting.
Is there anyone else for communications? Okay, well, hearing none, I'll go to the council portion.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Post Office Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I wish, Madam President, to talk about Section 11.18, 11.18 in the Southfield City Charter. 11.18 is entitled "Amendments", which describes how this council may amend the charter in one easy step. Sad to say, this one easy step conflicts with the not-so-easy mandatory two-step Michigan State law known as the Michigan Home Rule Act of 1909. Thus making Section 11.18 null and void. 11.18 became null and void way back in 1958, when the original authors of the charter overlooked the second step in a two-step procedure. And here are the two- And here are the two steps. Step number one, the Southfield City Council must first of all pass a proposed charter amendment. And then the next step, the missing step, step number two, we, the people, the Southfield voters, must pass by ballot election council's proposed charter amendment. Sadly, Section 11.18 lacks step number two. In a word, after 63 years, that is after 63 long, long, long years, it's about time that you folks here on this council wake up and do yourselves a felicitous favor and fix Section 11.18 along with the many other flawed sections in the Southfield City Charter in your city charter. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the line for communications?
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Pamela Gerald. First of all, I wanted to say to this council that we are doing the people's business. This is not a candidate's forum, so all of the political rhetoric, we don't need to hear that when we are dealing with the city's business and the people's business. I'm so glad, Madam Chairman, that you said what you said tonight because that's some of what I wanted to talk about. You know, we had primaries and the citizens voted not to have a primary. And then in 2021, I mean, in 2020, due to the efforts of votes being suppressed in the southern states, people decided to bring the primaries back. And we were in a very unique situation, having another vacancy on council. And you addressed it appropriately, that we would have to have the seat vacant for over a year. And the election would cost a whopping $90,000. And the fact that the charter requires that we have seven representatives, it would not be conducive to the residents and to the business to not have seven people occupy those seven seats. So I'm glad that you spoke up and said that the people or that the council was going to appoint Councilman Myron Frazier. He is very experienced. He's been appointed several times and we do need seven council people. But I want to appeal to my Southfield friends and voters, and I do miss you guys. I miss going to the facility and we will get there very soon. I have three things that I want to remind these people that the residents in the city of Southfield have had to endure: negative flyers, negative campaigning, and the race card. I'm going to urge all these candidates, their managers, and their volunteers to run a clean race based on the issues that will have a direct impact on the people of Southfield and our community. As Marcy Simms said with the old men's clothing store, she said, "An educated consumer is our best customer." Well, for this election, I'm saying an educated consumer is our best voter. Do not allow these candidates and their campaign staff to run a negative campaign. All we want to hear about are the issues and what you're going to do for the city of Southfield. We are not going to allow that negative political rhetoric and another darn flyer to stop us from having an appropriate election. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
Madam President, that does conclude our comments for communication portion this evening.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, I'll open up to you. I'll start with you, Mr. Mandelbaum.
Thank you, sorry about that. I hit the wrong button. I just, I want to take a moment and there's a organization that I've been familiar with and I've joined a little bit, some of their meetings, the Coalition for Black and Jewish Unity. And it is, it's run by some Baptist pastors in Detroit. It's also with the Jewish Community Relations Council and it's a great organization that really helps bring understanding to to everyone. And it just so happens that today, in history of blacks and Jewish unity, that the National Conference of Christians and Jews elected Dr. Marian Bishop Coffey as a co-chairwoman. And she became the first woman and the first African American to hold that position, to hold that position in the Human Rights Council or this human rights organization. And this goes back all the way to back in 1991, I believe. And it just shows that there's always that unity that we're still striving for within within the city, within the entire globe, if you will. And and one thing that I did, I did want to ask to administration along the same lines is, I know that we budgeted and we created a position for a diversity officer on our human resources department. And I was just wondering if that has, what we're doing to work to fill that position, if if there's any movement on that? And just so we can, you know, start having those discussions within the city for the employees, for residents, just so we can become a more inclusive city in as a whole. So I don't know if Mr. Zorn, if you had any updates on that?
If I may, Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, the the answer is yes, we we have a job description. We've not started the formal posting. We have discussed it with Council President Taylor. And in the past, as the job description was being put together, also with Council President Cruz. It with this conversation, we can move this forward to our next study session, which would which will be May 3rd.
Yes, I think that would be great.
Yeah, I also, I think that would be definitely be something that would be be very helpful. And, you know, it's also interesting, Blue Cross, where where I work, my other full-time job, they do a lot with diversity and inclusion. And I know that we had a discussion last year with, at that time, Council President Cruz and administration with their VP of HR, who happens to be our VP of Diversity, sorry, who also happens to be a Southfield resident. And one of the things that Blue Cross has started pushing very hard this year, and I think it would be good for for the city to offer to their employees and even if we could figure out a way to do it in this, you know, through, you know, in this virtual world that we're currently living in. But they they've done some training and some classes and some webinars on unconscious bias. And it's something that I found very useful, very helpful. And I think that this is something that everyone, no matter where they feel they fall on the diversity and inclusion scale, I think would be very helpful. And I don't mind talking with Council President and administration offline about trying to figure out how to set up this type of either training for employees or even, you know, even hosting something like this for our community. But I think that this is something that we should all be working towards and really trying to build together. So other than that, please continue to stay safe and have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. This past weekend, April 24th, marked the 106th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. I'd like to thank Mayor Cyver and also President Biden for acknowledging the 1.5 million Armenians who were killed and driven from their homes during the genocide in 1915. I would also like to wish the Orthodox community and our Greek friends a very happy Easter this coming Sunday. Also, please continue to mask up and social distance and stay safe. For those of you who have been vaccinated, thank you. If you could try to encourage other people to get vaccinated or if you know of someone who just doesn't know how to be vaccinated, please share with them the city's hotline and many places are now offering, just, you know, walk-in clinics and sites. We need to encourage and promote everyone to get vaccinated so we can end this pandemic and hopefully get back to a normal life. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yes, thank you. I want to mention what I mentioned last session and perhaps the session before that. The VA is now offering the COVID shot to the veteran, their spouse, and their caregiver for free. They, you have to just reach out to your primary care doctor with the VA and just schedule an appointment. So I know a lot of individuals might listen to this, but they are not veterans, but if you know a veteran, just pass the word on. So it's ultimately critical that you get the shot and the last or new, the Pfizer shot. So the veteran, your spouse, and your caregiver, you're free to get a shot at the vaccinated VA hospital. That's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cruz?
Madam President, I have nothing to say other than just to thank former Councilwoman Morris for her service. And I wish all the residents of Southfield, you know, good safety and that they hope that they are continuing to do the things we need to do to keep ourselves safe in terms of COVID at this time. And that will be all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hoskins?
Thank you. And I too want to thank Councilwoman Morris for her her service to the city. And I also want to welcome back Councilman Myron Frazier, who served our city so well for so long and was actually still currently serving our city as the Chair of the Wildlife Commission. So I'm looking forward to having him back. I also just want to just echo what Councilwoman Banks and Councilman Cruz said, we just want to make sure we're all staying safe. If you need information about where to go to get vaccinated, to get tested, you can always go to the city's website. And that is city of Southfield, cityofsouthfield.com/covid19vaccine. You can get information about where to get vaccinated. And hopefully, we can get as many Southfielders vaccinated as we can so we can get back to some some semblance of normalcy. But with that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I too want to say thank you to our Councilwoman Morris for her service to the city. Thank you for all you've done and and all the committees that you've served on and for your leadership role. I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Nancy Banks for one of our citizens, Pam Gerald. She did not want to cry. She was so thankful for the sympathy card that you sent her. And she asked me to say thank you on her behalf so that she wouldn't be crying. So thank you for taking the time out to acknowledge the passing of her mom and thank you for the beautiful card and the beautiful words. And in addition to that, I'd like to say like the rest of the council to stay safe, continue to do yourself safe distancing, wear your mask, wash our hands, and take the shot. All of us are trying to stay healthy and we want to return to some form of normalcy as soon as possible. And it takes all of us to do that. So thank you for everything that you do to continue to stay safe. And that's all I have for tonight, so. Mayor? Mr. Cyver?
Hello?
Okay, now we can hear you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I wanted to pick up where we just left off regarding vaccinations. The Southfield Vaccination Clinic is taking appointments for through Ascension, Michigan. If you go to their website or if you just type Ascension Health, you'll see the, it's very easy to register. You can just click on the date and the time of your appointment and they, it'll lead you to registration. Again, we are operating this in cooperation with Ascension, Michigan, locally known as Providence Hospital. And it's in the Southfield Pavilion from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday. And so far, hundreds of people have gone through the clinic and it's it's working very, very well. They do have capacity to do more vaccinations. And along with that, we are cooperating with our Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence, who has joined a campaign for National Vaccine Week. This will be May 1st through 8th. We are encouraging, as others have said a few minutes ago, we are encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. We all are anxious to return to some sense of normalcy. And we're, the way we think is best is going to be through vaccinations as it's really, really critical. And what we're seeing is well over now 1,000 new cases in the month of April in Southfield alone. And it's unfortunately, it's a lot of younger people. We get the reports from Beaumont that they're at capacity. And as is our nearing capacity at Providence Hospital. On a couple of other things, we are doing summer hiring. Parks and Rec is looking for seasonal employees as well as our Public Works Department. There are a number of openings. Some of them are, and Parks and Rec are conditional on the state of COVID cases. Hopefully, they'll decline. And then we can proceed with the number of summer activities, including opening the swimming pool. And Public Works is looking for people for grounds maintenance. And I want to, finally, I want to thank the council for their excellent choice in filling the vacancy with Myron Frazier. Myron has served the city very, very well. He's an excellent councilman and will hit the ground running, so I'm very, very pleased. Thank you, council, for making that appointment. Thank you, council, for making that appointment. Good night.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have administration. Mr. Zorn?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening, council, I do have one item that I am requesting action on. And I am requesting a resolution that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign a settlement agreement between Oakland County, Maryland Stanford, City of Southfield, and Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative LLC, following the review and approval by the city attorney's office and authorize the city administration to transfer funds to be reimbursed in the amount of $16,243 back to S and R, which represent the funds S and R I advance to the city. Council may, you will remember that we've been part of acquiring tax-foreclosed property. In 2018, we acquired the subject property. The, the owner of the property filed a lawsuit against the county and S and R I. The city was not named in the lawsuit. The, the S and R I and the city always said if, if something needed to be undone, we would undo the act. These, this settlement, in essence, titles the property back to the homeowner. I did send the separate, the settlement agreement out to council under a separate communication for council's review. The short on this is the county made an error in the, as they foreclosed on the subject property. I want to remind council, the city is not the, the foreclosing entity. We did exercise our right of first refusal pursuant to Michigan law. And as we unwind this pro, this process, this settlement will do that. The city attorney has reviewed the settlement agreement. As I said, the city attorney was not, the, the city was not named in the lawsuit. However, we did secure a release for the city in the event there is any other legal action regarding this matter. The S and R I did advance to the city $16,243 to acquire the property. The city did exercise its right of first refusal and acquired the property. The county will reimburse the city the $16,243 upon the court entering the settlement. And I'm requesting that the city reimburse S and R I the $16,243. In addition, the county will be reimbursing S and R I $2,350 for expenses S and R I incurred regarding the property, insurance, water bills, some minor property maintenance during this three-year period. I'll do my best to answer any questions, Madam President. But I am requesting council to act on the recommended resolution.
Okay. Council, I'll open it up to you and I'll start with you, Ms. Banks.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brightwell?
No questions, fairly straightforward. Thank you.
Mr. Cruz?
Questions for me?
Great. Mr. Hoskins?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Mandelbaum?
I have lots of questions. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion then.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve the authorization as presented by the city manager, city administrator.
Support?
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Mandelbaum, to approve the authorization to sign the settlement agreement with Oakland County, Maryland Stanford, City of Southfield, and Southfield Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President, I'd be remiss if not, you know, on behalf of myself and the rest of my management team, we too would like to thank Councilwoman Morris for her service. She challenged us in, in many ways and she made Southfield a much better community. And we enjoyed working with her. So we thank her for her service and wish her the best in her future endeavor. And then we'd like to also welcome Myron Frazier. Administratively, the selection makes this transition, in particular in consideration of the COVID period, much easier. And the administration would like to thank council. And we wel, welcome Myron back. Want to remind people to stay safe. The numbers are still very alarming. And as such, I want to remind council that the city will be the, that the city will continue to operate virtually as well as by appointment. Having said that, you know, at present, it appears that City Hall will be remained closed until Tuesday, June 1st. That is the day following Memorial Day. We pray these numbers do come down. I want to encourage people to take a look at Southfield Living as well as the Parks and Rec Magazine. Lots of good information in both publications. Want people to stay safe and ta, take the shot for the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Madam Attorney?
Yes, good evening, Madam President, council, mayor. I have nothing to say except if you get a chance to look outside your window and look at the beautiful moon that we have tonight.
Thank you.
There's some things, I forgot what it's called, but it's one of those super moons.
Oh, wow. Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Good evening, everyone. Just a quick request of the council, just for our permanent record. I am just currently asking for a motion to receive and file the letter of resignation for Councilwoman Tanya Morris for our permanent file.
Yes. Council?
This is Councilman Mandelbaum. I like to move that we receive and file a letter of resignation from Councilwoman Tanya Morris.
This is Councilman Hoskins, support.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilman Mandelbaum, supported by Councilman Hoskins to receive and file the, for the approval to accept and receive and file the letter of resignation from Councilwoman Tanya Morris. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Taylor?
Yes.
Cruz?
Fortunately, yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Hoskins?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Okay. And Madam President, I also just wanted to thank Councilwoman Morris for her service. Public service is never easy and you really have to step up to be a leader during this particular time. During a pandemic, it's been not the easiest task. Also want to welcome Councilman Frazier back to the fold and want to thank my staff for all their hard work this week as we got everyone's petitions certified. And lastly, I do want to remind the residents that we do have an election, just one precinct for Oak Park Schools. So City Hall will be open this upcoming Saturday, which is May 1st from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM for absentee voting. And we will be open on Monday and on Election Day. And lastly, I wanted council to keep in mind that the budget will be getting prepared. And we're looking at having a potential budget study session the week of May 10th. So if council could let myself know maybe what will be a good day so we can get that scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Planner? Or the planner's office? Okay, city assessor? Or city engineer? Okay, we have nothing to schedule. Someone has a question?
Yes, it's Treasurer Loenberg?
Yes, hi.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to let the audience know the reminder about the delinquent water bills for any, just a reminder again, May 21st is the deadline for anyone that has a remaining balance on their 2020 water bills. Those payments can be made through the Water Department on their website or by telephone or by mail. And also just wanted to let our viewing audience know that anyone that had a relative that passed away because of COVID, there is assistance from the federal government through FEMA.gov, F E M A dot G O V, for funeral assistance reimbursement for anyone that had a relative that passed away for the funeral costs. You can check the website to get more information. And hopefully, unfortunately, we've had many people in our, in our community that tragically passed away because of COVID. And so if it could be some type of compassion to, to help the families cope with the, with their loss, that this will be some assistance that's offered from the federal government. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chair. There are two things I forgot. This is Ken Cyver. The, we are doing the memorial for COVID victims on May 11th. We have an online site to post a brief bio and a photograph of, of the, anyone who's passed from COVID-19. The email address is kbrant, B R Y A N T, at cityofsouthfield.com. We will also be reading the names of those who passed on the 11th of May at 8:00 PM, our candlelight vigil at, on the front steps of City Hall. And finally, this is our, our city assessors last week. I want to acknowledge the excellent service that Mike Radcliffe has provided this city. Mike will sorely be missed. He's, he's a highly skilled assessor and he's done, you know, a great job for us. So we want to wish him well and again, thank him for many years of service to the city of Southfield.
Oh, wow. Yeah. Yeah. We wish you all the best, Mike, if you're still on and listening. Does anyone else have anything before we adjourn the meeting tonight?
Madam Chair, Councilman Brightwell, one more time.
Yes.
And I just want to, I've, I've worked with Mike since I was on the Board of Review. And I just want to thank him for the services he provided to the city and also the knowledge that he shared with me when I was on the Board of Review and subsequent since I've been on council. And Michael, enjoy your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same here.
Anyone else?
Councilman Cruz would just like to wish Radcliffe very nice retirement. And we appreciate everything he's done. He's always just been just top drawer in terms of everything he's done. And so we appreciate you, sir. And I know, I don't know if he's still online, but he's still, was a stellar individual with the city of Southfield. And thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
President? This is Treasurer Loenberg again. Just want to also send my best to Mike Radcliffe, the Treasures Department and the Assessing Department. Work hand in hand with each other, day in, day out. And Mike is a wealth of knowledge. We're going to be sorely missing him, but wish him well in his endeavors. As well as also to Councilwoman Morris, wish her well and thank you for your service. And welcome back to Councilman Myron Frazier. Missed you and definitely your wealth of knowledge. And so looking forward to working with you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.